Yes, thank you Mayor. The successor agency to the redevelopment agency first met with respect to potential[66.00][66.00]initiation of litigation with respect to one potential case and the successor agency provided direction to the city attorney on that matter. Next with respect to existing litigation with respect to property at 1264 Ocean Avenue, an update was provided and the city council provided direction to the city attorney with respect to that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the closed session is adjourned and we'll move right into the study session on the Sherwin-Williams site. I have a bunch of speaker cards, but first we'll hear a staff presentation. Maru.
Public comment?
Oh, that's right. Thank you. I don't have my agenda in front of me. Is there public comment? It's usually on items, not on the agenda because I'll give you time to speak on the project later.
Okay, I'm here to talk about residential housing projects in general that come before us in the, as we move forward. This city has committed itself to increasing its density. It's sort of like we are, we've signed on to the idea that we need to become more dense. Now, this has its origins, this concept that inner cities need to become more dense has its origins in the 1980s with the smart growth concept. And that is that cities should become more dense so as not, so as to sort of discourage suburban sprawl, especially, you know, on the edges of the city. So we should make, because that's, that's an inherent bad thing, suburban sprawl. So density is seen as an inherent good thing. And so this city is chasing that goal, the idea of becoming more dense. So we have a lot of developers coming before us that are using that idea that we've decided that density is an inherent good and they are presenting projects to us. And we're sort of, they're asking us to take it at face value that they know the amount of density that we need. We've never really had that discussion about how much density do we need? And so developers are coming before us, asking us to okay their projects and we're tending to do it. But I think we should have a larger discussion about density in general and about how much density we're really looking for. So is there, is there a point where there's too much density and then the quality of life starts to go down? And I posit the answer to that is yes, of course there is. And so I don't think we should take it for granted that any developer that's asking for a project, we should take it as an inherent good, that the amount of density that that developer is increasing us by is a necessary good thing. And that perhaps we should be having less dense, a project that's less dense because perhaps the developer is asking for something that's too dense and it's subverting our greater goal, which is to create a livable city. So remember, we want to appeal to the god of density, but even a greater goal is do we need to sacrifice our city for that paying homage to the god of density to reduce our livability? And I say no. I think the greater goal here is to increase our livability. So we should always have that at the forefront, livability. And then this abstract concept of increasing our density should come, you know, be a subordinate to that. So just as we look at projects moving forward, I think you should consider that, as livability is what we're looking for. Thank you.
Everybody who filled out, I just want to remind you, everybody who filled out a speaker card, I will call on you after the presentation. Are there any other public comments at this time? If not, let's move into the study session itself. Maru.
Good evening Mayor Adkins, council members, Happy New Year. Before I get too much deep into the project, this is a Sherwin-Williams mixed-use plan, unit development proposal. This is your second study session. I'd like to briefly talk a little bit about the PUD process. Our planning regulations require that any site which is five acres or more go through the PUD process. The idea behind that is to allow greater flexibility, creative site planning for large sites. This site is around eight feet, eight feet, eight acres. So the PUD process has two distinct phases. One is, and which is what we are looking at right now, is the preliminary development plan or the BTP. So the PDP essentially looks at the overall master plan for the site. So at this stage, what we are giving, what we are looking at is the building massing, the heights, the floor area, the densities, and the delineation of the open spaces in the site plan. So the PDP goes to the planning commission. The planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council and then the city council is the final decision maker. Once the PDP is approved, then is the second phase of the whole process and that is the FDP or the Final Development Plan. Now, the Final Development Plan is the detailed design of each building or the phase of development. So here we are looking at, you know, the design of the building, the articulation, the materials that are being used, the design of the units that are being proposed and things like that. So a lot more finer detail of each building. So the FDP goes to the planning commission and they are the decision maker. They are the final decision maker unless it is appealed. And then in that case, if it is appealed, then it will come to the city council. If it is not appealed, then the planning commission would be the final decision of the FDPs that come in. In terms of where we are in this project, we have been, the applicant has been working and vetting this project for a little over a year. In October of 2013 and then in the December, the planning commission and city council both had study sessions and both the bodies gave comments to the applicant. And after that, the applicant went away, they did some redesigning. And since October of last year, the project has gone through various committees, as you can see on the slide above. And October of last year, we had the second planning commission study session. And now we are at the second study session at the city council. The next, in terms of timeline, is the next event that's going to occur is next week and that is the EIR scoping session. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. So as you know, everybody has heard of the
Mayor, excuse me, sorry to interrupt, Maru. But council member Donahue needs to recuse himself at this time in consideration of the Sherwin-Williams project. Council member Donahue lives at the Artist Co-op, which is located across the street. And so therefore there's the potential for a conflict of interest. We talked about whether we wanted to seek a formal opinion from the FTPC on this. We haven't sort of finalized our discussions on that. But in any event, in the meantime, he should recuse himself from hearing this item. Nevertheless, and so he'll have to remove himself from the dais. Nevertheless, since it affects his property interests where he lives, he is allowed the ability to comment on the item as a interested citizen, so.
But I will not be commenting because I'm hopeful that I will get a ruling saying that I will be allowed to vote on this. So, but I'll be here to witness the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
All right. So in terms of the next steps that are going to occur, so each project in the city has to go to the CEQA process. And an initial study was done and an EIR is in the process of being worked at. So CEQA requires that a notice of preparation be issued and we issued that on December 15th. And the comment deadline ends on end of this month, which is a 45-day comment period. So the NOP is essentially asking for comments from the public and from city council as to what is included in the EIR, meaning what are the issues that the EIR needs to analyze and look at. And next week, on January 27th, the scoping session is a public meeting to allow the community to give comments on what should be analyzed in the EIR. This EIR scoping session is not a part of a city council meeting. It is also not a part of a planning commission meeting. It is simply a part of the project meeting. So as I mentioned, that the scoping session is not to discuss the merits of the project or give comments on the merits of the project, which is why we are here today about the merits of the project. But the scoping session is merely what should be analyzed in the EIR. And the rest of the slide kind of goes through the different steps that will occur. We don't have specific dates, but we expect the EIR to be published for comments sometime in spring. And then there will be a 40-day public comment, public review comment period. And after that, or during that, the planning commission will hold a public hearing on the draft EIR. So these, so the 45-day, 45-day comment period and the planning commission hearing during that time is to allow the community to give comments on the EIR that would be produced. Once those comments are taken, they will be responded to and that is what constitutes the final, final EIR, which would be published. So that would be sometime in fall of 2015. Once the final EIR is prepared, then the planning commission will hold a public hearing to consider the final EIR and certify that or recommend certification and consider the PDP and make a recommendation to the council. So it'll then come to the council sometime in late fall where you will certify the EIR and have a public hearing on the PDP and introduce an ordinance to approve the PUD. Because it's an ordinance, it will take two city council meetings. So there will be a second city council meeting, which will actually approve the PUD, PDP ordinance. It takes 30 days for an ordinance to go into effect. So sometime in winter, that is when the PUD would be finalized and would be in effect. And then after that, it is up to the applicant in terms of their timing regarding submission of the final development plan. And remember that is the design of individual buildings. We're expecting that to happen sometime in winter and spring of actually next year, not this year. So now to the project. We are all familiar with where the site is. It's about eight and a half acre site, site of the former Sherwin-Williams Paint Factory, which ceased operation in 2006. The remediation work was completed in January of 2013 and no restrictions on the type of land use were laid on the property. The site that you see in blue is what we call the city-owned railroad parcel. So about a year ago, this is the plan that was seen by the city council. Horton Street is on the top, Sherwin Avenue here, and this is the railroad tracks. So as you can see, you have a central green going on and then along the existing building along Horton Street was to stay and the rest of the site was divided into three parcels. The program was about 460 units, 70,000 square feet of office and 15,000 square feet of retail. And this, sorry. And this was kind of the heights that were proposed. So the highest point, the highest building was this building, which is about 100 feet. These two new buildings are 75 feet. And of course, the existing building, which is around 40 feet, would not change. Just to remind of what the city council, the comments that the city council made at the study session. One was to consolidate all the open areas to create one bigger and more usable open area. There was a concern of having the open areas in shade, which led to the suggestion of land swap with the parcel that is owned by the city adjacent to the railroad. More east-west connections, break down the parcels that they had created. Include a certain percentage of affordable housing units. There was also comment made that it favored the use of local labor for construction and suggested that the applicant look into having labor agreements that would include fare wages and chances for youth training. The applicant responded to your comments as well to the commission's comments and it has now proposed two options. One option, which would include the suggestion made by both the council and the commission to swap the city-owned parcel and include that open area within the site and the other without the swap. And the reason for doing that is that the timeframe for the city's availability for development of this railroad parcel is unclear at this time. Both proposals will be processed and analyzed, both in CEQA and otherwise, and the decision-making bodies will consider both the proposals for approval. The selection of which options will be pursued would be contingent on the city's long-range property management plan and the ability of the developer and the city to agree on the land deal for the swap. They have also broken up parcels B and C to create more east-west connections. And the building heights of parcels along Sherwin Avenue and Horton Avenue have been stepped down to 55 feet along the street frontage. So here is option A. And just to orient you again, you have railroad on the top and Horton Avenue at the bottom. Parcel A is the existing building. And as you can see, parcel B has been divided up into two, so has parcel C. And this option is the option that this council had suggested and that includes the rail, it proposes a building on the city parcel and then consolidates the open area within the site. In terms of what these, in terms of the uses here, well, the parcel A would be a reuse of the existing building to an office building. Parcel B is, would be residential building with ground flow retail along, along this, along the circle, Hubbard Circle as we are calling it. And parcel B2 is primarily a parking garage. It's 75 feet and it does include a few units, about 50, 50-plus units, as well as small amount of office space. Parcel D, C, and C1 and C2 are again primarily residential buildings. And I'll have a breakdown of precise units in the next slide. So this kind of gives you the height and the massing of the proposal. Again, this is Horton and this is Sherwin Avenue. This is option B. This lets the city parcel be developed into a park, however, the location of it remains as where the existing location of the city parcel is. And the rest of the site is then more or less organized in the same form. In terms of the program, it is exactly the same. The heights of the buildings are the same, the units are the same. And the FAR and the parking are the same for overall project. And this kind of gives you an idea of a bird's eye view of how the development would look like. So in terms of the comparison of a proposal a year ago and the current proposal, this is how it works out, slightly more units, slightly more office space, about the same commercial space. So this kind of breaks down parcel by parcel, different uses, the number of units and non-residential spaces. This is the vehicular circulation for option A and this is the vehicular circulation for option B. I am not going to go too much into the details of the circulation, vehicular, pedestrian, bicycle. I'm going to let the applicant dwell more into that in the interest of time because otherwise we have complete duplication of slides and they would be in a better position to kind of give you the various details, including of the open space areas in terms of the programming that they are hoping to have. So what I would go is to look at the project in terms of how it conforms to our land use policies. The general plan land use designation for this site is mixed-use, residential, and open space. And as I've mentioned, the site is over five acres or a PUD will be required. And the MUR requires that it, because it is over five acres, it needs a PUD and one of which must be a residential. And there has to be a mix of uses. The regulations do not specify an exact mix and that mix is to be determined by PC, by the commission and the council. And that is a question that would be for you at the end of the presentation in terms of whether the mix that they are proposing, the use mix that they're proposing, is that compatible or is that okay for the council or not. So in terms of residential density, what is allowed by a regulation is 85 units per acre by right. And that can be increased to 100 units with bonus points. So that translates for the site area of 419 units by right and 540 units with a bonus. And they are proposing 440 units, therefore the project will require 100 bonus points for density. FAR, what is allowed is two by right, 2.0 by right and three with bonus. They are proposing three, so the project will need 100 bonus points for FAR. In terms of height, again, there are two different height districts. So for the southern portion, it's 55 by right, 75 with bonus. And the northern portion, it's 75 by right and 100 with bonus. And what they are proposing for B and C is 75 feet, for D it's 75 feet. D is actually 100 feet, I'm sorry. So when you work it out, they will need 100 bonus points for height as well. So in terms of bonus points, as I mentioned, they need bonus points for height, FAR and residential density and 100 bonus points in each category. The way our regulations are written, this does not mean that they need 300 bonus points. The project will need whichever the maximum is. And they are maximizing, maximizing the need for bonus points in all the categories, but the project will need a total of 100 points nonetheless, because that's how our regulations have been written. The applicant has identified the following categories for bonus that they are going to apply for or have applied for. One is the reuse of a significant building and that earns them 35 points. They are proposing a TDM program, including bicycle sharing, which is 15, bike lockers in each building, that's 10 points, and electronic transit information signs, and that qualifies them for 10 points. They are also proposing family-friendly housing for 5% of the total units and that would earn them 10 points. So in our bonus category, what constitutes family-friendly housing for which they can get bonus points? These are that the units will have to have three-bedroom units. These family-friendly unit would need to be three-bedroom. They would need to have in-house laundry hookups. And they need to provide an additional 20 square feet of open space. This is in addition to whatever our regulations require. They're also proposing electrical vehicle charging stations and that earns them 20 points. So that adds up to 100 points in total. So in addition to the public park, which is approximately two acres, the general plan calls for the greenway to traverse this parcel to connect the Horton Landing Park to the north and the Park Avenue District Bay Trail to the south. The project does provide this two acres of open space in form of the central green and the plaza area. In addition, the project includes the design and construction of the park on the city-owned parcel, so they will be responsible for all the costs for design and construction, which is, which I talked about in the two different options. We do also have design guidelines and the one that I would like to point out to here is the sidewalk widths. So our design guidelines call for certain, the sidewalk widths, depending on the region, depending on, depending on the part of the city and depending on the kind of street. So what I want to point out to the council today is that the Horton Street is considered a green street between Sherwin Avenue and 45th Street. So our design guidelines for green streets call for a 15-foot sidewalk corridor. And the 16-foot sidewalk corridor would mean eight feet of clear pedestrian walkway, five feet of landscaped area next to the curb, and two feet of landscaped area next to the building. Now, on Horton Street, if you recall, there is an existing building, so you can't change the, you know, you can't move this building. And you also have a row of street trees. And the existing sidewalk is seven feet and, you know, the tree grate is about five feet, so that's 12 feet. So the issue is, since the, since the building cannot be moved or pushed back, in order for the proposal to comply with the sidewalk width, it would require, it would involve removing existing street trees. So at this moment, the applicant is not proposing to remove these existing street trips, street trees. So that gets us into this trade-off of whether do we want the existing street trees or do we want a wider sidewalk? Because in this particular case, because the existing building cannot be moved, the only way to widen the sidewalk is widen it towards the street and that would involve removing trees. So an arborist report was done by our city arborists and they, and that is attached to your staff report. And the health of the trees vary between fair and poor to good. But, so in terms of whether to preserve the trees or not preserve the trees, that is a question that we are asking the council. And the arborist report does conclude, and I'm going to quote, it says that "This is an excellent opportunity to remove problematic trees and provide a tree root environment for replacement trees, which will carry them along into the future without continual costly pavement repairs." So this is a sort of trade-off that this body has in the past talked about, so we would like your feedback on this issue. As I've mentioned, the project was also reviewed by the BPAC. They were generally satisfied with the overall plan and had a preference for option A. They wanted that the ground level park, bike parking be provided within each building. They wish the traffic calming measures to be incorporated in the design of the streets. They wanted the, wanted, wanted the applicant to consider streetcar as an option instead of every-go-round. The applicant also took the project to the Parks and Recreation Committee and their comments were that they generally liked the proposed open and recreation areas and the programming for the recreation areas. They wanted the central green to include some tables and seating areas, preference, they had preference for tennis courts. And they suggested that all green and turf areas be provided with electrical outlets to avoid use of generators for movie screenings. As I mentioned, the planning commission reviewed this proposal in October and these were their main comments where the commission agreed unanimously. One was the need to do a shadow study in order to ensure that the impacts, that there were no impacts on open space. Need to include affordable and family-friendly units. Need to include bike lockers in each building. Need to provide AC transit passes to all residents and employees. That the project should use reclaimed water and that the applicant should contribute to the Horton Landing Phase Two project. And that the applicant should also apply for Green Trip certification. DCC comments, which are staff comments, our comments also included that the applicant should assist in funding the acquisition and cleanup of the parcel B, which is part of Phase Two of the Horton Landing Park. There was a desire to see a wider central green, a desire to see a mix of family-friendly, affordable, and disabled housing. Mentioned that any fence along the railroad edge would need to match corresponding fences on the other side along Bay Street and IKEA. And the project should use reclaimed water as well. In terms of environmental In terms of environmental review, we have hired LSA Associate to conduct the EIR for this. And in terms of permits that this project will require, it will require PUD, and it will also require a general plan amendment, because as I had mentioned, the site is a mix of MUR and park and open space, and that will need to be switched in terms of the site plan that gets approved. In terms of our recommendation, we have a list of questions for you to respond and get, give us your input. Is the proposed siding of parcels and buildings acceptable? Is the proposed circulation and layout of streets appropriate for the site? Is the siding and size of open spaces acceptable? What type of open spaces do you wish to see in the Central Green and the park areas? Are the proposed height enassing acceptable? Are the proposed bonus categories acceptable? And should the existing trees along Horton Street be retained, or should they be removed so that the sidewalk could be widened? So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant also has a presentation, so...
If you don't, if the council doesn't mind, we'll hear from the applicant, then ask clarifying questions from council, and then have public comment. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Atkins and council members. My name is Bruce Dorfman. I'm with LMC Emeryville. Maru gave a fairly brief, or an abbreviated history of this project and of our involvement with it, because I actually think her first staff report to you goes back to 2005. So for two of you, you may remember that, and many people in the audience do. But basically, the concept that we created back then, the general backbone of the project, has been consistent and has been well-received, and actually, the general plan, when it was updated five or six years ago, incorporated many of those design principles. So we're pleased to be back in front of you tonight and present to you this plan. The biggest change over the past year since we last presented to you is we brought in a capital partner, being Lennar Multifamily. And Lennar is one of the largest public home builders in the country. And knowing your desire for homeownership and the like, we thought they were the perfect group to be bringing in to help us with this project. We've received numerous comments over the year and over the past decade from the public, the Planning Commission, the City Council, and staff. And it's a very ambitious project, and it needs to be in order to respond to all the comments and to do everything that we'd like it to do as well. I mean, we are providing public parks and large recreational areas. There's retail, there's street improvements, family-friendly housing, bike pass and walking pass, high-quality architecture, and, you know, that's reflected in the fact that we've committed to having five different architects involved, ensuring design diversity in both in terms of product type as well as architecture. And it's most importantly, consistent with the general plan, which was certainly well-vetted at the time it was adopted. So I'd like now to turn it over to Boris Dremoff with Roma, and he'll give a quick overview of some aspects of the plan that he wants to focus on. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Atkins, City Council members. It's a pleasure to be here. Maru has done a, you know, outstanding job of presenting many of the aspects of what the proposed plan is, so I will only cover, as soon as I figure out how to use this. Maru, what do I do?
It's better to use this.
Oh, this one? Okay, thank you. Thank you. I will only cover some of the additional refinements that we've done to the plan, particularly with the input we received from the Planning Commission work session. One of the things that came out of that input was the desire to limit the vehicular traffic from, in this area in here, and create more pedestrian and more open space linkages, and only allow the traffic that needs to go to serve parcel D. So what has happened since the time we presented is that 46th Street, which connects to Hubbard Circle, would be the extent of the traffic area, and we would improve the open space. So in this option A, this exists in both option A and in option B as well. So we have made that additional refinement as a result of some of the input that we received during that study session. The vehicular circulation, you can see in this area, so in other words, the dark red lines are curtailed at 46th Street, and then only the access to parcel D is continued. Other than that, this is, you know, option B is similar, except the access to parcel C1 is from parcel C2 rather than from Sherwin Street, as in this option. In terms of the bicycle circulation, both options are very similar. We make a very strong connection, both down Hubbard Circle, but we also have the connection adjacent to the railroad tracks, and that's true, again, for both option A and B. And we have also included the update of what is now proposed in terms of the bridge connection over the railroad tracks. We were dealing with an older version of that, so all of these have been updated to accommodate that. In terms of pedestrian circulation, also, the two options are very similar, and we have retained a connection between the two parcels, C1 and C2, as well as between B1 and B2. One of the other additional elements that was asked for by the staff and the Planning Commission was to describe the lighting more clearly on the project. And we're using three different light fixtures, and what we're proposing is the standard Hestia that the city has used on all the perimeter streets. Hestia also has a somewhat updated fixture that we were proposing to use internally in this area and here. And the fixture that has been established as the standard for the Emeryville Greenway would be used along the extension of the bikeway, along the railroad tracks. So you can see the spacing and the types of light fixtures that are now being proposed. And this is just a close-up of the fixtures themselves within the project, along the greenway and on the perimeter streets. We also have prepared a more detailed landscape plan. The dominant tree in the landscape plan is the Ginkgo in the center area, which was called for in the Park Avenue District guidelines. And in addition to that, there are some very colorful trees that extend out, the Autumn Blaze Maple, which is at each one of the connecting streets. This is the red dot that exists there. And the Podocarpus along the railroad tracks. And then on Horton Avenue is the tree that is being now discussed. And on Sherwin Avenue, we've used the same Brisbane box that exists there. So those are really, oops, excuse me, kind of following the continuity, and there are a number of different trees in the park areas as well. Some refinement of the recreational and open space activities occurred, primarily that the sports courts are being favored more towards tennis, and we have modified the plan to indicate how that could happen. But certainly still, there is the children's playground, the adult fitness, the Central Plaza area dog park, Open Meadow, and the bike pedestrian trail as well. Just, again, some photographs of the trees that are intended to be used, that were called for in the landscape plan, just to familiarize yourselves with them. There is a need for stormwater best management practices along the edge, and we have to do this in a manner that does not allow water to infiltrate into the subsurface, and so it is filtered and then connected. And the street trees adjacent to it have to be housed in a separate area so they don't mix with the stormwater detention areas. One of the changes that also occurred after the Planning Commission study session is that there was a request to widen 46th Street, which is what we're calling the connecting street between Horton and Hubbard Circle, to 60 feet, and that was a street standard, and the entrance at Hubbard Circle to 60 feet as well. And I think Maru mentioned that the landscape requirements for the sidewalk were modified to meet the same ones that are called for in the city's standards. The one that we're certainly, Horton Street, I think, was discussed, and the limitations, and the need to either keep the trees in the narrower sidewalk, or remove the trees if we're going to widen it to meet the standards as well. There is a fence proposed at the railroad tracks, and will be in keeping with the design that has been used elsewhere in the city for that area. The massing and overall is similar to what Maru presented, 75 feet, stepping down to 55 feet for the majority of the area, and then on this parcel here, up to 100 feet. The existing building would be retained, and there's a balance of office and commercial uses with residential uses on the project. So for the two options, similar massing, but different arrangement because of the disposition of the city-owned park site. That's a very brief overview of maybe some of the additional items that Maru left for me to explain. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Counsel, are there any clarifying questions only at this time before you comment?
I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay, so if there's no counsel questions, I'm going to call you up by threes. Feel free to just line up behind the prior speaker, and you'll have up to three minutes. Kristina Hanks, Richard Ambro, and Sharon Wilshire. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Kristina Hanks. I'm the owner of East Bay Pilates. I've been a business owner in Emeryville since 2005, so this year, March, we make 10 years. And I just want to say that as a business owner, I'm very positive about the project from that perspective. I see it as a potential boon, not only for new clients and customers for us, but also the proposed retail and office space. And I understand the constraints of wanting to make it artistically possible. I feel confident that the council will go in that direction. But I just think that it's, at this moment, we have two areas in Emeryville that are kind of what I would call blight. We have the problem here by Target with the homeless, and we have this huge empty lot behind us. We moved our business from the Bessler Building specifically down on Park Avenue when it was renovated. It's beautiful now with the trees, and it's very attractive, and it's definitely grown. And I see that opportunity to be able to grow our business, and having other businesses come into the area would also be a boon, not only to those existing here, but those new ones that would come, not only for our clients, but also those of us who live and work in here. So I just want to say thank you to the developers also for some of the great ideas of making that space, and I'd like to see it developed. Thank you.
Richard?
Hi, I'm Richard Ambro, and I'm a longtime resident, and I'm a retired archaeologist and a member of RUL. I have no professional opinions as an archaeologist and historian concerning the project, but I am concerned that however it's configured, and whatever you decide to do, what and where, it could impact and destroy archaeological resources. It's very close to the edge of Temescal Creek, and it was along the focus of occupation prehistorically and even in historic period. There are several problems that you should be aware of, and whoever gets to work on the project needs to address, is the problem of the recorded location of prehistoric sites and the archaeological information and the bodies that might be buried in them. And that includes destroyed materials that came from the destruction of the sites in historic period. Native Americans don't like human bones, their human bones disrespectfully treated. So there's a whole literature on where things were and where they are recorded to be as opposed to where they are. There have been changes in the landscape and the coastline that make this a little problematical. Also, the creek flooded repeatedly in historic period, burying materials, and there's also been earthquakes. The base of the Oakland Hills is a fault line, so the Hayward Fault shakes.
Thank you.
Okay. Done?
You have three minutes.
Okay, that's it? Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Sharon Wilshire, 1420 45th Street, Community Liaison for the 45th Street Artist Co-op. Our group has been here in Emeryville for over 40 years at 45th and Horton and Holden, a live-work anchor in converted industrial buildings, serving as a model, actually, for several developers, converting many of the handsome brick buildings into what has become the Park Avenue District. So now, after all these years, a neighborhood has been established, 45th Street Artist Cooperative, the Bessler Building, Horton Lofts, 1500 Park Warehouse, Icon, Blue Star Corner, Park Avenue Studios, and five of these have been, are in buildings that have been rehabbed, and the two that are new construction have actually also honored the materials and the scale of the neighborhood. The active Park Avenue Overlay District worked for several years to develop the 2006 guidelines and policies for this part of our city in the Park Avenue Plan, wishing to support the feeling of this area with so many one, two, three-story brick buildings, very much a part of the city's history, and the strong influence of the many artists in the area, deliberating ways not only to maintain this character, but to make it even better, hoping to encourage walkability, cycling, local-serving retail, and the arts, an enlivened and active neighborhood experience. With all this in mind, what's happening on Horton Street to support these goals in the current Sherwin-Williams development proposal? It feels as if the development has turned its back on Horton Street. An existing three-story brick building slated for commercial use that takes up 2/3 of that frontage, I actually walked it again today, of the Horton Sherwin-Williams frontage, and a new building that's seven stories of parking, and also a new vehicular street that's sandwiched between these two buildings. And so just wondering which part of this design equates to an enlivened and active streetscape on Horton. We'd like to suggest moving the proposed 46th Street, which is really an extension of Hubbard, back to its original location in the general plan, to the north edge of the Horton Street frontage, and moving building B2 back from the street, perhaps significantly back, while also bringing down its height. This would allow for the creation of green space on the Horton frontage, similar to what has been suggested on Sherwin Avenue, and would also give the several liner spaces, live-work spaces on the B2 facade a much more pleasant experience than the one proposed. As currently proposed, these spaces would be directly off the sidewalk on one side and potentially looking onto the Nevada Surface Parking on another. They won't have really access to all that wonderful green space and activity that's proposed for the project. And additionally, and I think that some of my neighbors might speak to this, if there's any way to create any sort of a passageway through the existing building, this would also create additional east-west access to the interior activity and to the green space. And it would break up that wall of Sherwin-Williams buildings on Horton Street. We really feel that... We really feel that there are many, many opportunities to integrate this new development into the existing neighborhood in a manner that honors the Park Avenue District Plan, benefiting the new residents and businesses as well of all of us who will become neighbors and patrons. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Before I call the next three, we have an overflow crowd out past the doors. You can always watch us downstairs, and if I call your name for public comment, if you fill that card, you can always come up. But we have a capacity crowd, so I'd like to encourage you to just watch us downstairs. The next three are Jennifer Fisher, Kim Harrington, and I'm sorry, Kanon Keenan Tolan. So I'm sorry if I butchered the pronunciation of your name. So you can just line up.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Fisher from the 45th Street Artist Cooperative. I'm just going to kind of reiterate something that Sharon just said, showing the ideas that we've been discussing for ways to enliven the street on 45th Street, on Horton, sorry. So this shows the existing proposal for parcel, for option B. This could be applied to option A or B. We just chose to show that one for this purpose. You can see parcel B2 in this illustration is moved back from Horton Street, kind of the circles there show. So green space in the front with the goal of enlivening the street, and then moving what's being called 46th Street over here and having pedestrian access on that side. So that's that proposal. I'm going to have another speaker about the next one.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. With your permission, would you mind if I switched with my neighbor, Kim Harrington, because I was going to make some introductory comments for the.
Kim, are you forfeiting your speaking?
I'm signed up on a speaker card. Could I just swap with him?
What's your name?
John Demerit.
John Demerit.
Demerit.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much. Good evening, I'm John Demerit. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the 45th Street Artist Cooperative. The mission of the 45th Street Artist Co-op is to provide affordable live-work space for artists in a supportive environment. In addition to providing live-work space for artists, the cooperative runs the Emeryville Youth Art Project, offering tutorials, field trips, and arts methods and demonstrations to promising high school students. Our community welcomes a new development in place of a very large vacant lot. The co-op was intimately involved in the lengthy cleanup process that occurred on this site. We also take this new proposed development very seriously and have real concerns and positive suggestions that we would like to express. In light of our concern and the fact that none of us are professional planners, the co-op has retained the services of two consultants, Richard Gisetti, who is helping us with SEQA issues, and Joe Light, who will be advising the co-op on planning ideas and concepts. Both of them will be speaking for us this evening. We have also formed a committee of co-op members, co-chaired by Sharon Wilshire, who you just heard from, and Paul Germain. I would like to highlight briefly some of the major concerns the co-op has with the concepts that the developer has presented us, to us to date. Individual members of the co-op will be speaking in more detail about these items this evening. We are concerned that the proposed central oval parkway is in fact a circular road with a median. Traffic impact is one of our biggest concerns with this project, and we recommend that a preliminary traffic study be performed before the EIR is implemented. We question whether what is being labeled as a mixed-use development is really a residential development with minor commercial and retail parcels. We question whether this is a complete application and believe that the project design is flawed, particularly when considering the most recent design proposals. The proposed location of 46th Street is absolutely unacceptable and should be moved back to its originally proposed location along the northern edge of the Horton Street parcel. This project should go forward without any density bonuses. We feel strongly that an overall reduced density is crucial for the well-being of the development's residents and the larger residential community. The development should be pushed back from the east side along Horton Street, creating more green space along the street. Our community has spent years researching a solar system for our roofs and believe that it's important that preliminary, that preliminary light and shadow studies be performed before the EIR is implemented. And finally, our community has a longstanding and ongoing positive impact on the cultural well-being of Emeryville through our efforts with the youth art program, the Emeryville Celebration for Arts, and as well as Councilman Donna Hughes, various public art pieces, one of my favorite ones right behind us. We would like to see the project implements arts and culture into its infrastructure. Thank you for your consideration.
Do you need a portable mic?
I think so, yes.
Is there one down there?
Hello? Hi, my name is Janan Tolan. I live and work at the 45th Street Artist Co-op. I'm delighted to see that the neighborhood in which I've lived for 15 years is changing. I'm also delighted to see that South Park, which is a truly fantastic neighborhood of San Francisco, was the inspiration and model for this project. South Park is quiet, yet lively, and is a constantly frequented neighborhood, and people spend time on benches to read under the trees or eat lunch in the sun, children play on grass, and it is, there's an ample space for all these activities. There are cafes and restaurants spilling onto the sidewalks and commercial spaces opening onto the park all around it. The structures that are bordering the park are mostly one to two-story tall, a perfect proportion for the size of the park. When I look at the proposed project, option A and option B, I want to see South Park, but I do not see South Park. I do not see any of these qualities, nor do I see the scale it is supposedly modeled after. Instead, I see massive buildings towering over a narrow median strip-like opening where the sun may only shine for a few minutes a day, and where automobiles, bicycles, pedestrian, parked cars, and emergency vehicles all are to share the same congested, noxious bottleneck. I do not see a mixed-use project. I do not see a park enlivened by small commercial spaces. I do not see promenades. Instead, I see narrow corridors cutting through massive blocks, linking building A to building B to building C, et cetera, severely dividing commercial spaces from residential ones. Then I have these questions. Is this a truly mixed-use project? What is the utility of the central green? Is it truly a public space, or is it a gated residential project? Why overlook the potentials and plan to reach maximum density and height when we all know that congested rental housing projects do not create communities? There's a fantastic opportunity to make something great happen here, opening up the facades to the bordering Horton Street and Sherwin Avenue, giving those facades some transparency so they are not like oppressive walls. Make the green area park visible and accessible from the street instead of tucking it behind the walls. Avoid labyrinth-like corridors, avoid congested heavy density. All this will improve the project greatly. Bring light in, bring air in, and trees and people and children. Make it human-scale, make it pleasant for people to live there, make it pleasant to people who don't live there, and make people wish they live there, and make people want to be part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim, why don't you come up next? Paul Germain and Therese LaHaye.
City Council members, I'm Kim Harrington, 31-year resident at 45th Street Artist Co-op. Can't hear me?
Speak up a little.
How's that? I came up with a potential solution to the Great Wall in parcel A on Horton Street, and my thinking was to push 45th Street through parcel A and parcel B1 with the width of the street to 45th as it is today, and perhaps an 18-foot portal which would allow a single roof line across parcel A and only taking up probably the two floors in parcel B1. And it would also give greater access to first responders coming down Hollis to 45th Street and straight into the development. I think, having looked at Horton and been around for this many years and watching Horton Street and Sherwin Avenue and so forth, it seems to me that this would help in keeping Horton Street and Sherwin and some of the other streets, Hubbard. It would break up some of that potential congestion, which I think is about to happen. But I like, I like the project, and I hope you listen to some of our recommendations. Thank you.
Hi, Paul Germain, 1420 45th Street. Obviously, the substitution of a residential.
Can you talk closer to the microphone?
Can't hear me? How's that?
You're being broadcast.
Oh, right, yeah. When I sat there, I remember that. Obviously, the substitution of a residential development for an abandoned paint factory is a good deal for the neighborhood, and we'd like to recognize that. We would like to say that the project density is too high. It's just, why would you need that much density in this area? It's the most dense project ever conceived for this area. It may be the densest project that's ever been presented to the city. For example, this is 100 dwelling units per acre as proposed. Blue Star Corner, which is right adjacent to this project, which is an award-winning David Baker and Associates design that was built, most recent development, adjacent to this project perhaps, but it is 20 dwelling units per acre. That's, this is five times that density. Density limits control development intensity. Okay, height, bold setback. I know I'm preaching to the choir, but excessive density, I'm going to read this, it's from the American Planning Association, "Particularly if poorly designed can result in inadequate daylight, reduced open space, increased parking demand, increased traffic, and even a lack of privacy." What's driving this additional density? The city's policies that give the bonus density for some amenities, a few bike closets, and you get a 10% density. What if the city disallowed, this is, this may tell you how much I don't know about the whole planning process, but what if the city disallowed, did not approve, the bonus densities? That takes 15% out of the project. It would make probably 90% of the people sitting in the audience really happy, and it would fit into the neighborhood much better. The NASCAR Speedway that is designated as open space, I had this image of an architect going to a developer and saying, "We need more open space," and the developer saying, "Well, why don't we call this open space?" Well, you can't call that open space, it's two roads and a median. Well, if we call it open space and nobody calls us on it, then it's open space, right? I think this is what has occurred. I would like someone to call them on, that is not open space. It's still being promoted as open space, so honey, if you're looking for the kids, I drop them off in the open space, and they'll go to school from there. I don't think they'll hang out there. I don't think you'll do anything there. That's a median. And so somebody's got to call them on that. I had.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
I'm Therese LaHaye from the 45th Street Artist Cooperative, 1420 45th Street, and here speaking for the electrical committee. We have spent a decade researching photovoltaic cells on our, on the roofs of, on 45th Street, and we have selected two possible contractors. It's an older building and not an energy-efficient building, and the initial investment to reduce our electrical usage to just baseline usage is $250,000. That's phase one of the project, and then to offset our entire usage is another $250,000. So we are concerned that the seven-story building across the street could block afternoon sun, thwarting our half-million-dollar investment to save energy at the 45th Street building. So we would like to encourage you to initiate the shadow study. It's early in the process, is possible. Thank you.
Next, I'll call Tim Curran, Archana Horstein, and Joe Light. It's Tim.
Hi, Tim Curran from 4250 Horton Street. I live directly across the street from the trees that are being considered for removal. I'll speak to that first. Remove those trees and don't return them, and that'll be an effective way of getting rid of me, and my daughter, and my wife. It's the only buffer on the street. It's becoming a much busier street all the time, and those trees are gone, it's just me and the bricks. Very bad. That's all I'll say about that. I'd like to speak to the development and what I've seen and what I've reviewed in preparation for this meeting. When SRM Ernst came before the council in December 2013, a year ago, they proposed 460 domestic units. I'll keep it short. Today, they're proposing 540. That's an increase of 17.3%, which is better than the stock market. Very nice, very nice. They started out with a very nice, calm introduction, saying, Joe Ernst stood at this podium, said he wouldn't be seeking the development bonuses for density, just disingenuously, he didn't need to. He got them for height. Now he's proposing the maximum density, and in fact, I'd like to point this out, between the last planning commission meeting and this meeting, there's been a miraculous creation of more developable land, a variable stocking stuffer for the developer. When staff presented the proposal to the planning commission, they showed that the proposal was 540 units. It was said directly after that, so the applicant will have to remove 10 units to comply with the density bonus maximum. If you look there, they're still applying for 540 units because Boris Dramov, and I suppose someone in staff, had their conversations and massaged the numbers, changing the developable land from 5.3 to 5.4. Get it? 530 units, 540 units. Magic, voila. Pop the champagne corks for SRM Ernst. They just made 10 units over the holiday period. I don't think that this developer has our interests in mind. When they don't, when they reduce the amount of family-friendly housing from the proposed 10%, they squeeze it down to 5%. If you look at the parking arrangements for city parking arrangements, they haven't done that either.
That's your turn, thank you.
Hello and good evening, Mayor Atkins and council members. My name is Archana Horstein, and I'm a resident of the Emeryville Co-op since 1979 and executive director and co-founder of the Kala Art Institute for over 40 years. So I'm very rooted in this town and love it very much. It is a local, the organization I direct is a local arts organization at the nexus of Berkeley, Emeryville, and Oakland. I thought I'd mention the importance of having the new development well-integrated with the surrounding residential communities. To do that, I suggest bringing art into the project. To do that, I suggest bringing art into the project as you are surrounded by artists, and you guys know something about that, I'm sure. I know you will include public art as it is a requirement, but I'd like you to consider art as an ongoing, changing exhibition in a gallery space, for example, or a pedestrian passageway that's wide enough and with locked and well-lit vitrines that a curator could do changing exhibitions in. You could also use it as a passageway into the more interior parts of the project. Cala already does an arts passageway in downtown Berkeley. We've done eight exhibitions there over the last three years, and what I've found is that it's remarkable. People get to walk, instead of on the sidewalk near cars, they get to safely walk through a passageway, enjoy the art, learn something, and feel safer, and also, it just adds so much to people's lives. People don't realize how much it means until they get to live with it, and this would be an opportunity for the developer to incorporate the art that surrounds them and also bring out the art maybe in the people that'll be living there. So I would like to thank you for considering this idea and wish that the very best design principles, the best architecture, the best hopes for people's interactions, and for the good neighborliness that we can develop here, because it could be very important for all of us, and I really appreciate the big effort that's gone in it so far, and I recommend that a little more effort go into it. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Joe Light. I'm working with the 40th Street Arts Cooperative to advise on another project. I'm a planner with 30 years of experience in the field. Now, first off, even though this is just a study session based on very partial information and no entitlements or guarantees will be issued, study concept plans facing very limited and only partial considered scrutiny often have a tendency to come sedimented in concept and plan from their very beginning and thus preclude potentially better alternatives and better directions. So in this case, you're looking at plans which are very small scale. There's no scales on them, there's no dimensions on them, you don't have massings, there's a whole host of studies and background information that you really, really need to get a good sense of the relationship of this project to its own internal coherence, as well as the way it fits in with the community. Therefore, I only bring this up to suggest that any actions or any suggestions you take tonight be considered in the sense that they may be sedimenting, they may be giving a direction that maybe isn't ready to be given. And that's any information you give, any direction bears in mind the full scope of what you're ready to convey to an applicant with what information you have before you. Now, this is a large project, 540 units, nearly 100 parking stalls that entail thousands of daily auto trips. At 100 units an acre, it's the densest project in the city, as been pointed out to you. Only three others actually have even reached 85 units an acre, which is the baseline maximum for this property, which is a large project. Now, moreover, it's really only a tenuously mixed-use project. It portends 648,000 square feet of new residential flooria and unmeasured hundreds of thousands of square feet of garage, which haven't been measured and haven't been disclosed, and only 20,600 square feet of new commercial space, which is less than 3% of the new construction. And moreover, most of that 3%, most of that 20,600 square feet is designated for live-work or residential amenities rather than actual commercial, and those are hardly non-residential categories in substance. So in fact, the new commercial is very little. The great majority of the commercial being proposed, 79,000 square feet, is an existing parcel A. Now, since each and every one of these buildings is going to be on its own parcel, apparently, and can be sold separately, it's very, very likely that that building A, which has very little interface, very little mixing either architecturally or in any kind of use concept, is highly likely to be alienated and sold off.
That's your time, thank you.
Next, I'll call Kristen Peterson, Gary Grimm, Donna Briskin.
Yeah, what he said. My name is Kristen Peterson, and I live at 1420 45th Street, and I'm a 32-year resident of Emeryville. The Sherwin-Williams project has often been compared to South Park, that Holy Grail in San Francisco, and I'm sure a lot of people would be really happy to see something like that in the neighborhood. I worked across the street from South Park for several years, and I know what I see here is nothing like South Park. South Park is a user-friendly, lush, green park of nearly an acre. It's surrounded by 58 small, one-to-three-story buildings that are barely the height of the existing Sherwin-Williams building. It's truly mixed-use. Sherwin-Williams will have maybe a half an acre of open space to serve 10 times the number of units. When you combine the seven massive 75-foot-story buildings with the north-south axis that they're sitting on, you get a tunnel that is in shadow the majority of the time. The streets surrounding South Park are twice as wide as any street near Sherwin-Williams. These wider streets handle the majority of the traffic, leaving South Park with low-traffic volume and bike and pedestrian-friendly streets. The proposed 46th Street and the Oval are really just extensions of the already overburdened general streets of Emeryville. This makes the green space even less usable. The proposed 46th Street exit onto Horton is a short distance from the driveway for the Artist Co-op parking lot. The two-facing drive poses a potential turning and traffic conflict. This is the only access that the Co-op owns to our main parking lot. After witnessing the traffic fiasco that resulted after the Target at Christmas time and the more recent restoration hardware sale, I worry about the infrastructure's ability to handle the density of this project. I strongly encourage the council not to grant any bonuses. I also encourage the council to require both a traffic study and a shadow study before approving any design plans, and to think long and hard about the density and integrity of this project and how it fits into the Park Avenue district. Reducing the density, extending 45th Street through, moving 46th Street north, moving Building B2 back from the street, as mentioned by others, are all great ideas. I hope you give them a lot of serious consideration. I would also love to see the same scale and integrity of neighborhood and the spirit of community of South Park come alive in the Sherwin-Williams project. Buildings that honor history and architectural integrity of the neighborhood, the sense of community, the respect to the arts, in addition to a welcoming park and a walkable, bikeable neighborhood, will be a big step toward this. If this project is done right, it will truly be something that enhances the neighborhood and does the city of Emeryville proud. Now, that would be an ambitious project.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, thanks for the opportunity for us to come in and comment today. You're hearing a lot from the 45th Street Artist Co-op. We're here now, and we're going to be in here now for a while. My name is Gary Grimm, and I'm speaking on behalf of my wife, Ann Holesbury, and myself. Ann's had her painting studio at the 45th Street Artist Co-op for approximately 30 years now. This is not your ordinary development project. This is one that will have major impacts in Emeryville and particularly the surrounding community. Mr. Dorfman was accurate when he said, "This is an ambitious project." I agree with Mr. Dorfman, it's very ambitious. In fact, you've heard from other speakers that this may be the most densely populated residential project in the city, and as some of our good neighbors at 1500 Park have pointed out in their comments to you, the population of Emeryville will increase by about 10%. That's an ambitious project. Thus, we think it's essential that this development receive very careful consideration to minimize the negative impacts and maximize the positive impacts. This must not be on the fast track. It's fast track from here on, looking at the PUD timeline and the SEQUA timeline, that's got to mellow out a little bit and look at these things more carefully. We're concerned with the maximum density, the maximum FAR, the maximum building heights that have been requested. We'd like the council to direct the applicant to consider some of the other project designs, such as the one that was presented to you tonight, that would reduce the density of the project. Things have been said about bonus points, yes, bonus points are discretionary. Some of the things that have been proposed for bonuses are things that the project proponent should do with good design principles for the project anyway. Bonus points? Finally, we think the application is incomplete from a couple, I'll give you just two examples. One has been stated, a traffic management plan and traffic circulation study should be done as part of the application, not later. We agree with our neighbors at 1500 Park that the traffic impacts are very critical, and as you know, anytime there's an incident on I-80, things get very congested on Horton, Hollis, and 40th Street. Secondly, light and shade studies should be done and should be completed soon. This has been mentioned by the Planning Commissioners, and for the Artist Co-op, the quality and quantity of light is essential, and it's just not acceptable that blocked sunlight occur partway through the afternoon. So in summary, we urge you to do the right thing and consider some of the things you've heard tonight.
Good evening, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Donna Briskin from 1500 Park, not from the Artist Co-op, and this was random queuing, so I didn't know I was going to follow those compliments.
It is random queuing.
I was going to say, it's wonderful to see the Artist Co-op out here tonight, and everything that they're saying is, we support and more so, and we're just glad that we didn't really, the 42 people that signed our submission to you to come to where we really would have had a space problem. But as you know, we submitted our concerns in writing to you, and so we're not going to go, I'm not going to take the time to go through them tonight. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things that haven't been emphasized so much here tonight. One is that we strongly favor option A, as I think the council did and the Planning Commission did, and I just want to say that again. Also, in terms of the height limits, we appreciate that the developer lowered, at our request really, the height limits at the street level to be 55 feet and then to taper up to 75. But when you look at that overhead drawing, you'll see it's really a very modest setback, and we would like that setback to be much more significant so that, again, the size of the buildings don't overwhelm parcel A. In fact, we would like to see none of the buildings, again, none of the buildings along the street perimeters exceed the existing height of Building A. That's a beautiful building, and to put even 55 feet next to a building that's less than 45 feet is going to overwhelm that building on all the sides. Again, in traffic and circulation, we've heard consistently that residential programs, residential developments don't cause traffic. We don't necessarily agree with that. We're very interested in the traffic study, and we will be submitting something on that as well. We think the traffic study should include looking at the parking lot, which I guess has a grand, the parking lot to the north, the old and the Vardis parking lot, has pre-approved for a 200-foot tower. That will obviously impact Horton as well, and the building with the Badminton Club also has started, I know they came to the Park Avenue Committee talking about development. So those future developments should be part of that traffic study, and again, we'll be submitting something else on that. In terms of density, couldn't agree more in terms of not having the bonus points there. But also, nobody's mentioned the housing element that was recently adopted, and I think this parcel should really take the city forward in the housing, moving the housing element forward, specifically in having the family-friendly housing and increasing owner occupancy and therefore tenure in the city, and a wide variety of housing types, and I don't think there are enough family housing units there. I also agree in terms of the bonus points. Thank you.
The next speakers are Greg Harper, John Bowders, Mike McConnell, and Richard Grissette.
Greg Harper, I too live at the Emeryville Artist Cooperative. I didn't realize that we were going to have the EIR scoping so quickly, so I'm going to reserve some of my AC Transit, more AC Transit-related to next week. I just want to say that Joe Light has really said the most important thing. There are no entitlements here right now. There's a whole thing of, oh, what you've got right now, the bonus point system you've got right now, the zoning you've got right now. What you need to do is you look at this and say, okay, what we've got right now is what we're getting, and that is something we either do or do not like, and to change things so that it is more likable as you go, because you've got a year before everything's cast in concrete with respect to, because what you've got now is some anachronistic things going on. I'll give you some examples. 20 points for charging stations for electric cars, that was great in 1985. I mean, we really needed to do that sort of thing, and we did, all up and down the state. I was on the Air District, and we just gave all kinds of bonus points for doing that. This is 2015, you shouldn't have to give bonus points for electric charging stations, it's a requirement. Come on. The other thing is, and this I know a lot about, AC Transit has put in a lot of real-time arrival signs. You know what everyone is? This is not the new real-time arrival sign. They're worthless. You're given 10 points away for things that nobody's going to use. This is what's going to control, not those things, so that's 30 points right there. And then you've got points for, because you're reusing a building. You know, those are points that should be given at the design review stage, because Emeryville has two very good examples of good redesign and bad. You look at what was done from the electrocoating plating, beautiful stuff. Boy, that's what you want. You look at what was done between Powell Street and Stanford Avenue up there in that redesign, and you want to go, oh my gosh, you know, don't you guys know how to use architects? I mean, so that's a design review thing you can do. Lastly, I just want to say, there's nothing wrong with looking at a project of this size and saying, you know, you're going to phase this, because this is of such a scope that we want to know what you want to build first, and we want to see, okay, this is what it takes to do that and that, and here are some conditions on continuing, because we want to learn from what you're doing.
Good evening, John Bowders, the Besler Building in the Park Avenue District, and it was perfect to follow him because he saved me half the things I wanted to say, actually. This is a handout. All the bonuses that are on here are bonuses, that's what that word means, they're bonuses. And so the nice part about everybody showing up tonight is all the things that I could say, I can only, I can focus on the thing I really want to say, which is, when Bruce came up here, he talked about, I'm giving you park space, I'm giving you retail, I'm giving you brand-new buildings, but he didn't say the word I wanted to hear, which is, I'm giving you affordability. And that has been at every Planning Commission meeting, and that was at your first City Council hearing, and I'm surprised nobody said it till now. And you have a city attorney who's great and competent on these issues, I think, but I want to give you a little context. I'm an affordable housing advocate, I'm also a lawyer who's worked in affordable housing for almost 10 years now, and the Palmer case, which is the crux of the issue with our inclusionary housing ordinance, we don't make them give the 15% anymore, there's this in-loofe. In-lofees are horrible for a couple of reasons. One, money is not worth what it is today, seven years from now. Two, this is the last major piece of land in Emeryville that's suitable for residential development. If you give it up, where are you building the affordable housing of the future? Three, it takes seven years to get the Housing Trust Fund that you're putting this money into, to a point where you can build one of those projects. You're losing the opportunity. RENA just came out, ABAG released its new RENA for 2014 to 2022, and we are supposed to build 1,400 new units in Emeryville. Okay, 700 to 750 of them are supposed to be affordable. We didn't meet our goal for the last eight-year period. So what are we doing? This is the goldmine for getting us right, and it doesn't have any affordability component, and they're going to tell you that you can't mandate it, and they're wrong. You can avoid the cost-of-Hawkins problem in two scenarios. You can avoid it if you make a contract with the developer to do something specific for that, or if you give up financial accessibility to them, or you give- that, or if you give up financial accessibility to them, or you give them an incentive or entitlement. The Palmer case, the City of Los Angeles did not have to give up a single entitlement to the developer in that case, and that is why that court case struck down the inclusionary ordinance. The City of Pasadena, the City of Roseville, they still enforce their original ordinances, and they enforce them strongly. And so I'm encouraging you to look more closely at that, to circle back with the city attorney and get an outside opinion if you need to. But I absolutely believe and know that you can mandate affordability in exchange for the entitlements they want. And a little gold nugget here that was left out of the short presentation we got, but was at the planning commission thing, that road extension on Hubbard, that has a 12-foot grade up. So when they tell you that there's a setback 55 feet at the street, that building is already, like, 6 to 10 feet higher on the ground. So that's not a setback.
I'm Mike McConnell, live at 1500 Park Avenue. And although I will miss the geese, the drought has pretty much chased them away, so we are pleased that this site is going to be developed, and it will -- it has the potential to enhance our neighborhood. It also has the potential to destroy our neighborhood. The people in -- along Horton, the people at the Artist Co-op, 45th, and the people in 1500 Park, it's life and death for us. This is -- I'm so happy there's so many people here. I am one of the 42 who signed the letter from Donna, so we are not all speaking tonight, so you're welcome for that. But the, you know, Fortieth Street is a major artery. Powell Street is a major artery. San Pablo is a major artery. We got the freeway on -- all of a sudden, in the middle of these quiet little streets, Hubbard Street is a narrow little street. Sherwin-Williams, there's no traffic there unless they're playing badminton. These streets are going to be overwhelmed. If 10% of the population is dumped right into that neighborhood, that quiet little neighborhood, it cannot handle that kind of density. We are pleased that developers have made some improvements. Frankly, option B was completely unacceptable with the original plan. Option A is a vast improvement, including Halick as one of the ingresses is a real improvement. No one cares about traffic on Halick. But it's -- the potential of a huge amount of people along those tiny little quiet streets, I don't see how they can handle it. The traffic study has to be done. The green space, clearly a median is not a park. Clearly no one's going to be playing frisbee in the green space. If there is going to be density, it needs to be in the northern part of that space. We should not have a canyon along Sherwin Street. I mean, there's no place in Emeryville where it's like Manhattan, where it's five stories high on either side. Our building is only 45 feet. To go 55 or higher is unthinkable. I think option B should not be an acceptable -- an option. I think it should be option A or nothing. And I think the volume should be pushed further north. We -- I have no problem with another 200-foot tower on the north side of that lot, as long as it doesn't put a shadow on the Artist Co-op. Let's have another tower. I like -- I don't mind towers and green space, but not along Sherwin and not along -- not where Hubbard is going to be this -- the ingress. So finally, somehow, Mike Biddle has -- we've met with him. I know he's -- the option B, option A issues are really tough, but I would urge the city council to make somehow them a priority. It cannot -- we cannot say it's up to the state. It's out of our hands. It sounds like it is, but let's change that. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Richard Gressetti. I'm a Sequa consultant with over 30 years of experience. And I'm going to talk a little bit -- I realize that the Sequa scoping meeting is a week from now, but there's a relationship between what you're doing now and what gets done there. And what the point that I'm going to try to get to is that there should be a greater separation between what you're doing now and when you start the Sequa process. So this is a big project, and I think the Park Street folks, in their letter, calculated this is a 10% increase in the population of Emeryville. That would be the equivalent of an 80,000-person population increase for San Francisco or 30,000-person increase for Oakland. It's a big proportional increase. Generally, things like traffic and shadows and wind are done during the EIR process. But for a project of this scale, in this sensitivity, in this proportion of the city, it would be more appropriate to do those studies now as part of the design, to figure out whether or not this project is really a feasible project, is really something you want to move forward to before it is cemented into place and analyzed in the EIR. There's a -- you also need to look a little more carefully, I think. You need some more information. Now, you have a preliminary development plan and a final development plan process, but some of the information that's in your final development plan probably needs to be developed now for analysis in the EIR. If you don't know what these buildings are really going to look like, and you do an EIR on them, you're going to miss some of the impacts. The Sequa doesn't do a good job of addressing urban design issues. Those aren't really environmental issues, per se. I mean, there's a visual analysis in Sequa, but really, the urban design issue should be addressed in study sessions like this. And you should get that urban design down before you start the Sequa process. There's a -- in Sequa, in Sequa case law, there's a very strong tradition and a strong dicta that a stable and accurate project description is essential to starting the environmental review process. In this case, there are so many issues that seem to be outstanding that this is almost a rough draft of a project description, and that it would be better to have, you know, to continue your work with staff and with the applicant and with the community to work on the project, get a little further along before you start the Sequa process. This is a long way of saying that the study session is to help you develop your input on the project description. The fact that it's overlapping the Sequa process and already about to start the traffic analysis for the project, it's -- there's not enough separation. You can't do your work, because the Sequa process is already taking off with this project. It's already running. So I would urge you to defer the Sequa process until you're done and you're happy with the project.
We have run through all the people who filled out speaker cards. I want to make sure that any other person who wishes to speak, who hasn't spoken on this, gets a chance.
You've heard pretty loud and clear here tonight. The biggest problem with this project is the -- it's too much density. It's too big of a project for the neighborhood. You've heard that loud and clear from many speakers. Also, you need to know, there's this little problem. Just so everybody here sees, a new document called the Emeryville Housing Element. And this was just voted on by the city council in October. Brand-new document. We spent a lot of money and a lot of time, volunteer and paid time, staff time, on this document. So we need to defer to this document. It's brand-new. We can't just have this project just overrun this brand-new document. And if we defer to this project, this document, the housing element, which is good till 2023, we can't build this project as is being proposed. The project is all rental. This document says no to that. The project has no affordable housing, as Mr. Bouders talked about. This document says no to that. Furthermore, the project -- the developer knows that we are very sensitive here to family-friendly housing. And so he has made the project 5% what he's calling family-friendly. And if you read his -- if you look at what he's proposing, he's defining that as three-bedroom units. We shouldn't have such a stupid way to define family-friendly housing. We need to have a more nuanced and a real-world definition of family-friendly housing. And as it turns out, the city is, right now, discussing that. And family-friendly housing is not simply three-bedroom units. It involves -- it needs to involve affordability, absolutely, and involves many other aspects that are now being talked about. And this developer does not address that at all. So it's using the family-friendly housing thing like as a cudgel against us or something. And this document is very clear about family-friendly housing. We have to have it. And so we need to be smarter about this. We need to put -- this project's on too fast of a track. We need to decide among ourselves what really is family-friendly housing, instead of just, you know, just throwing the term around. We actually need to define it better. There's another document that says that makes it impossible to build this project as is being proposed. And of course, that would be the pedestrian bicycle plan, which mandates no more than 3,000 vehicle trips per day on Horton Street. And there's really no way we can have a project that's this huge, this massive, this dense, and have less than 3,000 vehicle trips, because we're already over that on Horton Street right now. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the Sherwin-Williams project?
Good evening, mayor, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I don't live close to Sherwin-Williams. It just happened that way back when the project was being proposed, I was invited to be -- to submit a plan by Councilman Jennifer West, and I went to San Francisco to present the plan. And there, I don't know what happened to my plan, but this new project doesn't look like that. And one of the reasons I submitted the plan was strictly on energy harvesting symbol. I did want to have all the building in a way that they'll be oriented so that with solar power, solar panel, we would harvest the maximum energy possible per unit. And here, I don't see anything like that that has been applicable. So I don't know. Maybe something is missing, or maybe you're not interested in the energy consumption. But when this building is going to give up, who's going to supply the energy? I don't think we are going to be able to build another power plant nearby, because 500 units, and they're all going to be powered, some by electric, some by gas, but it will take lots of energy. And I'm worried that this project, unless it's reviewed on the energy efficiency basis, is not going to be economical. Thank you.
Any other public comment? I'm closing public comment. Council members? It's our turn.
Good start. Yeah. I'll jump in here. First off, I want to thank each and every one of you who came tonight. It's a real testament to your community, to our community, that people have thought so carefully about this project. And listening to the comments, one of the things that I got from these comments is, we really have to look at a configuration of items. And let me just run down them and see if I've got them all. Density, affordability, the whole issue of bonus points. Mr. Harper made a good point. What was a good idea in 1985 on the electrical connections for the cars, that should be a standard saying now. So we want to take a look at that. We want to certainly take a look at the traffic, seriously look at the traffic. And I believe when the members from the Co-op came forward and talked about their attempt to do the solar lighting, we want to get those shadow studies sooner than later. And then I think we have made some progress. Option A certainly is light-years ahead of what was originally proposed, but this is a massive project. It's going to affect not just the Park Avenue area and the Artist Co-op and 1500 Park. It will affect the whole city. So I would urge staff, you know, I looked down at the list of the questions that staff has asked the council to respond to. I think what I feel the council needs to respond to is what the people of the city have come forward and focused on, because I know for sure, you're not going away, and you'll be back here, and you'll be through this whole process. So let's dig in. Hold applause. Let's dig in and focus so that we can really get the optimal project that we're all looking for. That's all I have to say.
I would also like to thank everyone who has taken their time out of their own evenings to speak to us tonight. And I just noted that not one person who spoke was completely happy with the project as it stands. I second Nora's point that we need to look at all of the issues that you brought up, again, including density, affordability, shadow studies, traffic studies. And I appreciate the comments from Mr. Harper and the gentleman who mentioned the Sequa issues, because I would like staff to please let us know what we can do to make sure that everything is phased properly, so that all of the issues that we and the public have may be addressed in a timely fashion, and that we can actually count on our input being So that's all I have to say.
I was furiously taking notes. And thank you for everybody, for what you've pointed out this evening. I really appreciate it. I have a couple of things that I want to reiterate. I co-sign on to the things that Nora and Diane have talked about here. But I think one message that I feel is very important is that we have to get this right. This is going to be here for 40 years, 50 years, or more. And so we have to get it right. We should not be in a hurry, and we should get things that we want in our city. Right? So with that, I think that whatever we need to do to do this in a very orderly fashion, which is with as much public input as we can have, is important. I think that there's -- I appreciate that the developer has had lots of public meetings. I know that that's been part of the process up to this point. But now, you can see, people are very invested in the details of what's happening, and there needs to be a lot of feedback. Right? And so I'm not sure how we either kind of elongate the process for the EIR or postpone the beginning of it, but the idea that we need a stable and accurate description of the project before we start the EIR is very important. That's going to include the light and shade study. That's going to include the traffic study. So I want to know what we can do for that process. Some other things that I took note of, I too am concerned about affordability. Right now, in our city, we have new apartments coming online. There's a one-bedroom for -- a studio, actually, 471 square feet, for $23.58 a month in our city. Affordability is a crisis in the region, but it's also a crisis in Emeryville. And I noticed that when Meru gave us the slide with our notes from the last study session, certainly affordability was emphasized, so was the labor agreements for the project. And while the applicant responded to several other things, we got no response on those issues. So I hope that going forward, I think the message is loud and clear. People in Emeryville are interested in affordability. Also, the 540 units, with a 5%, 5% of those units being devoted to three bedrooms, that's just 27 units out of the 540. And let me share with you that in our city, 60% of our housing stock is one-bedroom and studio. 7% is three-bedrooms. So this project doesn't even meet the status quo, which is really bad already in our city. The average bedrooms per unit in our city is 1.3. I'd like to understand what the average I'd like to understand what the average bedrooms per unit is in this development. I also think that the bonus categories are a kind of giveaway. They're at our discretion, and we don't need to give those bonuses. I agree with the comments about the median. I don't think that that should count as open space. It's just not good enough. And with that, I also want to second the many comments about 45th Street and that connection being made. I live over in the triangle, and so, to get across 45th, you have to cross in Pablo, take a left, and then 45th continues. It's not a good situation. It's not a safe situation, and I don't think we should repeat it in the Park Avenue district also. And then, one last, two more comments. The idea, someone said that this is tenuously mixed-use. I think that's a good way to describe the mixed-use here. If we're going to have a mix of uses, it needs to have a very different balance. And then, finally, when we were looking at the pictures of the lighting, I got very hung up on the one that looks like an arc. Aesthetically, I don't know if that is --
Light poles.
-- if that is part of the Park Avenue design guidelines. I don't think I've ever seen that before, but I say no to that. Those are my comments.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. And it is a testament to how engaged the community is and recognition of the fact that what we build here will stay with us. So, it is good to make decisions for, in the tradition of the Iroquois Nation, for seven generations out. So, I hope that we temper all of our choices now with the long view in mind. That being said, I don't want to reiterate every comment suggestion that I agree with. I will say, however, that when I hear about the bonus points, they do ring hollow now, and it's kind of, I think, a testament to how fast our world is changing. Because when they were designed, when they were put into our plans just a few years ago, they seemed kind of like right on, and now they're just kind of passe. So, things do change that fast. It's kind of amazing. I would like to see this project go to majority homeownership and what Jack meant, not rental, because that's, we've seen time and again, people who've been displaced out of town with rising rents. And without any rental protections or affordability thing in place, I think this is really, homeownership still remains the best chance for people, the average person, to build up some equity in town. So, I think doing that in and of itself will really change the nature of the project is making it majority homeownership right from the beginning. And the comments about the shadow studies, I happen to, I know, I don't know how many units inside the Artist Co-op have only skylights as their light source. They don't have wall, you know, windows in the walls to look out. So, I think anything that casts a shadow, especially on those interior units, would not be advisable. And we haven't done shadow studies, so we don't know for each season, each time of day, that kind of thing. So, I think we need to do that. I agree with the comments about giving a little more space before the SEQA timeline commences. And, let's see. The one thing I will say, no one commented on this, but in my entire time sitting up here, actually, I think the multimodal circulation plans that we saw tonight are actually the best multimodal circulation plans I've ever seen come to the city in terms of breaking up a super block. So, I want to thank you for the work and in listening to people on that because people can, will be able to walk and bike through it as well as drive. And so, I just have never seen that kind of flexibility. I don't, without actually seeing the massing, it's hard to say about the impacts on the neighbors because I have no idea about what the massing, it will actually feel like or look like. But I don't think, like some other projects in town, it looks like just from all the ways of entering into it, I don't think it turns its back on the neighborhood. The question is whether it's out of scale with the neighborhood and whether it's putting too much pressure on it. But I don't think it's a gated community, and I think we're talking about sidewalks and complete streets. And so, I do want to congratulate you on a circulation plan that accommodates various modes inside the project. That being said, there's been a lot of discussion about Horton Street, and I do think we need to do a traffic study before we start SEQA. And I don't see how a project of this size can't not impact the neighbors in terms of the vehicle trips. So, with that said, thank you very, very much for providing very valuable input. And Bruce, thank you for coming and hearing us out.
Mayor Atkin, could I, I'd like to ask Sabrina, do you feel the staff has a clear understanding of what the council has been saying up here to move forward from this point?
I'll defer to our planning staff, Charlie.
Yeah, it's pretty clear. I didn't hear anything about the trees on Horton Street, so I guess we'll defer that decision to another day. I do want to just make one comment about the SEQA process. Unlike the impression that I think has been given tonight, the project does not get cast in stone by the SEQA process. The purpose of the SEQA process is to vet a project and all of its various impacts so that the project can be improved and so that those impacts can be mitigated. I think a prime example of where the SEQA process was used really well in this regard is the Marketplace project, where an EIR was done for that project. And the project that ultimately ended up getting approved by the Planning Commission and City Council, and that was also a PUD, was not the project that was analyzed in the EIR. It was one of the alternatives that was in the back of the EIR that was put forward as perhaps a better way to design the project after having taken into account all the impacts that are analyzed in the EIR. So, I think it's a bit of a mischaracterization to say that the project description that's in the EIR locks in the project. That's not the case. And it's pretty unusual to do some of the more significant environmental analysis like shadows and traffic before you do the EIR. Those are an integral part of the EIR. So, I would urge you not to require that all those studies be done before the EIR get underway. Those should all be included in the EIR, which will then come back and inform you when you make your decision on the project as to what you want to require in terms of changes to the project to address those issues.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie.
Mayor Atkin, Charlie, when you talk about having an alternative, as we had at the Marketplace, an alternative plan, one of the young people that came forward today had an alternative plan. If he showed up at the EIR meeting with that plan, would that be considered?
Absolutely. I mean, one of the things that an EIR --
What's that? Stand up. There you go.
All right, Kim.
One of the things that an EIR requires is an analysis of alternatives to the project. And whatever is a reasonable range of alternatives, you know, usually two or three alternatives to the project are considered.
That meeting is next Thursday at what time?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
At what time?
A week from today in this room at 6:30 PM.
Okay. Diane, did you answer something?
I just, you know, in light of all of the issues that have been brought up by our community members, I'm wondering if it's, let me know, if it's premature to begin the EIR process without having addressed all of the issues that have, you know, come before us.
Well, it's kind of a chicken-and-egg thing. I mean, those things get addressed in the EIR process. That's what the EIR process is for. The EIR is an informational process. It's not a decision-making process. The EIR provides information to the decision-makers. And by law, you cannot make a decision on the project until the EIR has been completed and certified.
So, Charlie, are you saying to all these people here, show up on Tuesday with your ideas?
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay. Come back, come back. So, thanks again. And with that, we'll adjourn the study session. Yep. We're going to take a five-minute break. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our agendas.
I'm going to take a bathroom break.
I know, me too. I'm going to run.
Yes, it'll be on.
I love how you guys made buttons.
People have to come back next week so that it gets into the -- yeah. Exactly. So, we all would.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I'm going through the pages and then the --
It doesn't look to be changing.
There's like no, no printing.
This woman, right here.
Yeah.
It's downloaded everything. I'm just like, nothing is showing up.
There's no way.
I thought it was just the study session.
Do you have an extra one there for me?
There's some weird studying.
Enough there? Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Wait for Nora.
Thank you for new and old folks for staying. I'll, if we're, are we ready on the video? Okay. All right. I'm calling the January 20th meeting of the Successor Agency regular meeting to order. And please call the roll.
Successor Agency?
Successor Agency, yeah. Just please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Asher, sorry.
Here.
Yes. Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Atkin.
Here. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
At Pledge of Legions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda?
So, the city, City Hall here just paid to have the two newest council members, Ms. Martinez and Mr. Donahue, attend a three-day seminar presented by the League of California Cities in Sacramento. And it's a training, essentially a training for how to be better council members. This has been going on for years. New council members get sent to this. The taxpayers of Emeryville foot the bill for the transportation, for the fees you had to pay for the, you know, meals and what have you, hotel rooms. But everyone here needs to know that the League of California Cities has a, it's a political organization. It's essentially a lobbying group, and they have a political philosophy. And what they are is, they're basically a pro redevelopment agency entity. Redevelopment agencies are that, those are the entities that have determined that, redefine the word blight, so as to be able to help shopping mall developers get public largess. And it even, sometimes even includes at the city's margins in the sprawl area, calling farmland blight so that public money can be shuttled to favored developers to put in shopping malls. And it comes at the expense of public safety and education and schools. So, that's a particular way of looking at how to build cities, is redevelopment agencies. And I think it's a destructive way to build cities. But it is the way that this city deemed fit to send our two new council members to learn from this organization, which is a political organization with this philosophy that they have. And I think you can fairly characterize that, I would say, as that's a sort of a right-wing way you could look at building cities as opposed to, in other words, it's a pro-developer way as opposed to a pro-people way, which I would characterize, you could characterize as maybe left-wing, just for sake of argument, left and right. So, we got the right-wing, we paid, the taxpayers paid to have the two new council members get the right-wing view about how to build cities. I want, now, speaking now to Ms. Landreth, I want the two council members and everyone new council member from here on out to alternatively get another perspective. They got the right-wing perspective now. I think they should now be given another perspective, a pro-resident, pro-people perspective on how to build cities. So, I think we should, the taxpayers should now pay to have them go to another seminar produced by another organization, not the League of California Cities, that would give them a different perspective, more pro-people, pro-resident instead of, and it just seems to me, it's just not fair. I mean, why is it only the pro-developer method is the method that taxpayers are going to pay for? Something to think about.
Any other public comments? All right. So, we have a consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
The consent calendar.
shopping malls. And it comes at the expense of public safety and education and schools. So that, that's a particular way of looking at how to build cities is redevelopment agencies. And I think it's a destructive way to build cities. But it is the way that this city deemed fit to send our two new council members to learn from this organization, which is a political organization with this, with this philosophy that they have. And I think you can fairly characterize that, I would say, is that's, that's a sort of a right-wing way you could look at building cities as opposed to, in other words, it's a pro-developer way as opposed to a pro-people way, which I would characterize, you could characterize as maybe left-wing, just for sake of argument, left and right. So, we got the right-wing, we paid, the taxpayers paid to have the two new council members get the right-wing view about how to build cities. I want, now speaking now to Ms. Landreth, I want the two council members and everyone new council member from here on out to alternatively get another perspective. They got the right-wing perspective now. I think they should now be given another perspective, a pro-resident, pro-people perspective on how to build cities. So I think we should, the taxpayers should now pay to have them go to another seminar produced by another organization, not the League of California Cities, that would give them a different perspective, more pro-people, pro-resident, instead of, and it just seems to me, it's just not fair. I mean, why, why is it only the, the pro-developer method is the method that taxpayers are gonna pay for? Something to think about.
Any other public comments? All right. So we have a consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
What's the consent calendar?
I second.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Status report on Oversight Board legal expenditures, there isn't anything. And there's no report for the chair of the Oversight Board. So I will adjourn that meeting. And that takes us to the City Council regular meeting for January 20th. Again, Happy New Year, everybody. We're still here. We don't need to do another roll call. And I don't see any special orders of the day. Any more public comments?
Okay, we don't have the overhead projector anymore. And I gave the city clerk a document that I would like the five of you to see. I guess you'll be getting it now. And this is on our own internal document. It's, it's a, it's a section of the the family-friendly, the Emeryville family-friendly housing design guidelines. You'll see there, there is a, can I, can I get a copy? You'll see there that at the top has a, what's called a desirable two-bedroom unit. I guess in this case, three-bedroom. And then below there is undesirable. And you can see there's characteristics for, that make it undesirable. And there's characteristics that make it desirable for a family-friendly unit. You, you need to know that the, the Public Market Project, I guess it's called the Marketplace Project, is just resplendent with undesirable apartments. So why, this, this is, this document is part of our, you know, it's ensconced here at City Hall. We've determined that this is what makes up family-friendly units. This is described here. It's not just three-bedroom, three-bedrooms as I elucidated before. So why would this project be moving forward all the way now to the Planning Commission on, on two days from now, when it does not comport with our, this document? And of course, doesn't comport with the housing element either. But that's, you know, that's another story. But if you look at the floor plans on the proposal for the, the public market, or the marketplace development, they are, it is all the undesirable units. And why should it get this far, this project? Why shouldn't it have been stopped at the, you know, staff level? And the developer came and said, this is the kind of units we want to build. It seems to me that the staff should intercede at that moment and just say, well, no, because that, because we have these documents that say you can't build these kinds of units. And it just, just seems like it's broken. And I, I don't want, I'm really kind of tired of having all these documents just gathering dust here at City Hall. I want, I want all these documents that we're spending all this money and all this time, including a lot of volunteer time, I want them to start being taken seriously. The housing element, the, the family-friendly housing design guidelines, the bicycle pedestrian plan, the general plan, I want these documents, you know, we paid for them and we're invested, heavily invested in them. I want them to start being taken seriously. Thank you.
Any other public comment? City managers' report?
Yeah, just briefly, I know we're trying to get to some items tonight. We have the Police Department Citizens Academy. We are accepting applications now. You can go ahead and find that on our website. The, the academy runs from March 5th to March, to May 7th, rather, from, on every Thursday evening from 6:00 to 9:00, please, those of you who are interested. It's going to be the best Citizens Academy that we've had here. We've got some interesting surprises. And then also Maurice has a new staff person to introduce.
Good evening, Mayor Atkins, members of the City Council. I'm really happy to be able to introduce to you Keely Nelson. She's our new Associate Civil Engineer. She just joined our staff at the beginning of the year. And we're getting her up to speed on various projects. And hopefully be able to start producing more work for the city.
Welcome.
Welcome, Lauren.
Welcome here.
Do you want to say anything? You don't have to.
Who have a consent calendar?
Second?
Without exception, consent calendar is approved. This takes us to the first of two public hearings. The first public hearing is a resolution of the City Council approving the Berkeley-Emeriville-Oakland Transit Study Final Report. You already beat me to, I should read you up, Diana, so.
I want to make sure the computers work.
You have a report.
Good evening, council members. I'm glad to be here with the final report from the Emeryville-Berkley-Oakland Transit Study, where we think about transit in Emeryville, West Berkeley, and West Oakland. This report makes some short-term recommendations, some of which are new from a draft you might have seen earlier, about shuttles. It recommends adding a fourth route to the Emery Go-Around, something the council is going, the city's going to fund for a year but doesn't have funding for beyond that, to create a West Oakland shuttle from BART to Emeryville. And to increase West Berkeley shuttle service to Amtrak and North. It also suggests some changes to AC Transit's potential routes, expanding their potential new 48 from Public Market all the way up to UC Berkeley, and rerouting the 49 from Ashby-BART to Gilman. Another thing it recommends is improving the bus stops at Fortieth-San Pablo, and encouraging easy-pass purchases and new development. And about demand-response transit, I think before we were talking about a really complex idea someone had that involved smartphones and was very complicated. It turns out that AC Transit is now about to pilot in Fremont, a flex service, which is just a bus that touches the BART station every half an hour and responds to phone calls from ordinary telephones for drop-off and pickup. And the people in West Oakland think that would be a great thing to have at night at the West Oakland BART. So the report recommends that. The midterm recommendation is an enhanced bus trunk line going now from University Village to Jack London Square via 7th, 6th, Hollis, Mandela, and Third. And this would be a branded hybrid or battery bus. It would be frequent, have evening and weekend service, only five stops per mile, level boarding, shelters with lighting and cameras and real-time arrival info, and marketing so people know it's there. Now, the report also describes and evaluates streetcars from West, from MacArthur-BART into Emeryville and West Oakland. This time, we have a little insert about what if it were infeasible to use the existing bridges. We could stay on this side of the tracks by going up Horton and down Hollis. And the West Oakland part, excuse me, connects the, connects to the potential Broadway, whatever it turns out to be, to form the O that's in the West Oakland specific plan. I wanted to talk a little bit about our cost estimates. The basis for our cost estimates in terms of enhanced bus capital cost, we use cost per mile from the San Pablo Avenue Rapid Bus and the Ventura Boulevard Rapid Bus in Los Angeles inflated to $20.14 with a bus life of 12 years, which is what the Federal Transit Administration says. For our streetcar capital costs, we use cost per mile from Seattle inflated to $20.14 plus 25% for being in the Bay Area. And for the, the length of the lifetime of the streetcars, we use 30 years. Average lifetime of streetcars ranges from 25 to 40 years. So this seems to be a number that the FTA has accepted in applications for grants. For operating costs, we use the cost per revenue hour from the National Transit Database. So our cost estimates are, the capital cost for the enhanced bus trunk line would be $11 to $12 million with annual operating costs of about that much. The streetcars are very expensive. And the capital, the operating cost per mile is higher than buses because it, you have to maintain the tracks and the overhead lines as well as the vehicles. We had comments on the draft report from transit agency boards, from several groups in Oakland and Berkeley and Emeryville, and from our two advisory committees for the project. The AC Transit and BART board, at those meetings, each director spoke, but the board didn't get together and say, this is what we think is a board. So our district director at the AC Transit board was open to the idea of an AC Transit route on like 6th-Hollis-Mandela, which is what we're thinking about. That's one board member. The BART Board of Directors would like to see the option that connects to four BART stations, which is what we trotted out in the spring, comment. He liked that. He wanted to keep that. The Oakland City Council requested that we not recommend a streetcar. They were concerned about bicycles and about freight movement and about cost. That's a long-term thing. Who knows what they'll think 15, 10, 20, 15 years from now. But they did like the idea of the shuttle or the bus. They thought that something should go on Shellmount to where the stores are, not just on Hollis. Because of our schedule, I had to take the report to some meetings while the draft was already, while the final report was already posted. And so I have an addendum that incorporates comments from those meetings. And the addendum says about the Oakland City Council and the streetcars. Because the Oakland streetcar concept is in the West Oakland specific plan, this report describes and evaluates that option in the event that the City of Oakland decides in the future to pursue a streetcar system. Maybe 10, 15, 20 years from now, a big developer comes in, they design it to keep the streetcars away from the bicycles, all the recycling businesses move to the old Oakland Army Base, and who knows what could happen in the future. But we're honoring their comments by not saying we recommend it. The EBOT's Technical Advisory Committee had a few things to add. If there were to be a streetcar, there would need to be a maintenance facility. We shouldn't mention a federal formula funding as a source because you can't use it for this. If the owner is not an operator, like if we were to form a tri-city joint powers authority, please would they hire an existing operator and not have a new operator in East Bay? So everybody agreed on the committee that that was good. And routes will adapt as decisions are made. AC Transit is going to adopt in May their new route restructuring. And what we will then try to do, I think, is to put together something that fills in the gaps in what their routes end up being. So it might not be exactly what our maps show today. And the Planning Commission, this is something one of the AC Transit directors said too. Said that streetcars on San Pablo Avenue should be studied as a future way to provide transit to these communities. And that AC Transit should add a direct route between Emeryville and downtown Berkeley on the diagonal on Stanford Avenue, Adeline Street, and Shattuck Avenue. They've been saying this through the whole process, and they said it again. And they also approved our addendum responding to Oakland and the advisory committee. And today, I got a comment from Phil Banta, who was working on, with everybody on the West Oakland specific plan, and developed this nice West Oakland walk, which features parks, places, and people from West, in West Oakland and downtown Oakland. And he would like to see a shuttle that goes this route. And I know I'd forget which one. There is, I have heard one AC Transit director say they thought that was a good idea and maybe could work. But I have to point out that the AC Transit does have a route that goes on 14th Street from Wood Street to, at least into downtown Brooklyn, in their proposed, they have an existing one on 14th Street, and they have a proposed one that would go even farther over to Wood Street. So just passing along that comment. So I recommend the, oh, we, I went backwards. So that concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Atkins? We do have a speaker card for this. Do you want to hear?
Oh, okay. No, go ahead.
Excuse me. Chris Peoples, why don't you come up? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Atkins and members of the council. My name is Chris Peoples. I live up the block on 40th Street in Oakland. I've been a transit activist for about 50 years. I've served on the AC Transit Board for about 18. I gave up my car about 17 years ago, so I go everywhere on transit. I chaired the Planning Committee for most of my time on the AC Transit Board. And as of last week, I'm the president of the AC Transit Board. But I'm speaking for myself because we didn't, as your staff pointed out, we didn't get together and get a whole formal position on this, although we were very skeptical about, about large parts of it. I would encourage you to encourage your staff to participate in the numerous training, transit planning efforts that are going on right now. There are a bunch of them. The Metropolitan Transportation Commission is doing an inner East Bay transit plan that includes all of this area, all of the AC Transit area, all the way over to San Francisco. The Alameda County Transportation Commission, ACTC, has a very extensive transportation study that's going on now covering all of Alameda County, which would certainly include all of this. AC Transit is in the process of doing a comprehensive operations analysis, partly because it's been 10 years or so since we've done one, partly because the economy is getting a little better. So we've got a little bit more money to add some service back in. And partly because Measure BB just passed, that gives us about an, roughly an additional $26 million a year, which we got to be careful about because we need to renew our parcel tax in two years. And if we don't do that, the $26 million is a wash. But we hope that it becomes $26 million additional dollars. We have our planning staff going out and doing a parallel effort to a lot of what your staff did, starting with basically blank maps, and giving people tape that represents 15-minute service, and how much we can provide in a given area, and let people try and figure out what they're doing. These things are marvelously uncoordinated. It's not your fault. It's not MTC's fault. It's just the way life works. But I would really encourage you to encourage your staff to participate in all those, because those talk about addition, about existing pots of money. To the extent, the marvelous thing that Emeryville did, what, 20 years ago now, is they managed to come up with an additional pot of money from developer fees. And so you develop your own internal system, which was fine. You save money in part by paying your people about half as much as we do, total compensation. And some other folks are gonna come up and talk about that. But if you can integrate into the existing planning for the existing pots of money, and then try and figure out how you add to that pie and get more money, and essentially do what you did 20 years ago, I'd really encourage you to do that. The cost estimates you have for streetcars are woefully under-costed. I'm glad that somebody finally figured out that you had to have a barn to fix the streetcars in. But your costs compare vehicles to vehicles. They don't compare the cost of putting in the track, putting in the overhead catenaries. And those are extremely expensive. And the rule of thumb among transit planning people is you put in a streetcar when your bus boardings are 50,000 or more per day. And there's nowhere in the East Bay where that happens. But anyway, I would be happy to answer questions. I would happy, be happy to, I thought some of my staff would be here, but they're not. I'd be happy to send my staff over to answer questions if you're interested. Thank you.
Thanks. Lauren?
Thanks. I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, thank Diana and everybody who's been working to get the EBOT study to the point it's at. Thanks for all of the hard work. And just a couple of comments. So, the first thing is, I'm sorry, the first thing is that it's, it's always good to be aware of everything else that other people are doing so that you can incorporate all the good ideas and not recreate the wheel. But one of the things that the EBOT study has going for it is that it's really local-focused, and it's really looking at a specific corridor in ways that when you zone out and look at the entire Bay Area, some of the things that we need in this community wouldn't get heard necessarily. So I think there's a place for everything in that respect. Oakland was really loud and clear about not wanting streetcars at this point. And I think there's some validity, and Diana touched on it. Certainly, we don't know where we're gonna be 15 or 20 years from now. And while there is a lot more idea about where a streetcar could work well in Emeryville, West Oakland has no idea what's, it's gonna hap, you know, what's gonna happen to it in the next 15 years. And, you know, once you put tracks down, it's hard to move them. So, so, and then two more points. I know that the study mentioned something about a joint powers authority being difficult necessarily to fund. But I do want to encourage you to think about that, one of the things, nothing against BART, nothing against AC Transit, nothing against all of these big organizations that provide us with such wonderful service. But one of the things that EBOT has done really well, as I already referred to, is there, there's a lot of inherent flexibility from having a small nimble body that is dealing with a very specific area of focus and not the entire Bay Area. So, you know, if the JPA is not the way to go, I encourage you to not farm out service for this area to one of our bigger brethren, because they have a lot on their plate, and we need to have some flexibility for this community. And then the last thing that I want to say, and this, the E-BOSS study doesn't mention this in any significant way in any of the report, is we need a clipper cart on steroids. If transportation's going to work well in this area, not only in the E-BOSS study section, but study area, but also in the greater community, we really need to have a much more flexible way to go from different transit places. So from BART to AC Transit, to a ferry, to, you know, so that it can all be inclusive. And I would encourage you to at least broach that with the study that we think about, a way to make our lives a lot easier and to make transit more accessible to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Any other public comment on the E-BOSS study? Could just line up.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Lee. I am the newly-elected vice president of Local 192 Amalgamated Transit Union in Oakland, and we are the union reps for the AC Transit employees, all 1,600 of them. And we also represent two privatized companies, which is A-Pair Transit in Hayward and the LaHoe Transit, which is now called National Express. I think that, you know, for this to be viable and meaningful for labor, to help us rebuild our infrastructure, this type of work should belong to union labor, because I understand that these streetcars will be privatized, so I'd like to help promote, to see if we could, you know, be a part of that system. That is our work. Thank you.
My name is Andre Carpio, and I did express some great satisfaction to hear that the E-BOSS project has been accepted by the MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Department, and that Alex Bossman was one who really pushed the system. And I'm really pleased because not only we have a foot in the door, but there is so open for alternative. And when the first project was presented here in the city of Emeryville, I did at that time present an alternative project, which did not call for a streetcar, but called for a suspended railway, and a suspended railway based on the tele-technology of the solar car. In other words, we would have a system, we would have a wagon that will be attached on this by rail, and that will depart from the top of the bar station, from every bar station, except those that are on the ground. And from there, they would be diverted to different directions according to the demand. In other words, there will not be a train of cars, but a single car that the demand would correspond with the purchase of the ticket. And I have here several plans. I mean, it could be difficult, but I could give you a sample of the design here, and there is many, and also want to introduce what we call the, this is all the station would look like, you know, basically. And so, and also would like to introduce a-
Mr. Carpio, speak into the microphone. You're being telecast. Speak into the microphone.
It's fundamental, sure, what we call equitable fare schedule. In other words, everybody has a dimension, and as you know, the energy spend is relative to the weight. And in that direction, it would be unfair for the small individual to pay for the fare for an elephant. I'm talking about, not the Republican, but a real elephant. And here, I have made several, and I could give you the mathematic formula that will go with it. I'm sure we're not interested in that. But what I'm saying is that with the system, with the tram that I'm proposing, which is called the Sana, it does not require an electrical system because it's powered by battery and it's powered by solar cell. And it's very fast because it's not, it's not going on the streets, so we can reach 160 miles an hour from point to point. And for the bar station-
Thank you.
-to the Emeryville Police would take 45 seconds.
That's your three minutes. Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak about E-BOSS?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Danny Marshall, Assistant Business Agent for Local 192 Amalgamated Transit Union. I'm going to piggyback on what our vice president just spoke about and our board member. And we already have reliable service with AC Transit. It's not necessary for you to go private. You can have, you can have your staff work with AC Transit staff and provide the service that you need in Emeryville. It's no need to take away union jobs or go private and give wages and cut benefits. So basically, I'm just going to say, work with the service you already have with the agency already been established and service you used to have years ago before you had this every go-around. We just have service that was provided in this city in the past, and we can bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so is there anybody else wishing to speak before I close? Public comment on the public hearing? All right, public comments closed. Council discussion?
Mayor Atkins, I'd just like to thank Diana Kena. This has been a really extensive effort over many, many months involving a lot of people, a lot of comments, a lot of meetings, and I think the result has been certainly an eye-opener in many instances in terms of transportation. And I particularly like what Lauren Westrick said, that one of the values of this study is that it concentrates on this, this area here, from Berkeley down to the West Oakland Bar Station in Oakland. So I, it was a long, hard job, but it was well worth the effort. Thank you, Diana, and I'd move the resolution.
Is there any other comment from council?
No. A second?
Is there a second to the resolution to accept the report?
Seconded.
All right. Is there, well, it's a public hearing, let's do roll call. Councilmember Asher?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
And Mayor Atkins? Hi. Diana, thank you very much for all the time. This takes us to our second public hearing for the night, which is a resolution approving a conditional use permit. Sarah, you're coming up.
Evening, council. Sorry.
Time's up, Sarah.
So this evening, I'll be presenting the Doyle Street Lofts project to you. There's a materials board that I just set on the dais, in case you're interested in that. And the applicant architect, Alex Bergtron, also has a presentation to make for you and some material board, additional boards, as you can see. So the site location for this project is 5532 Doyle Street. It's directly south of iconic Doyle Project, which is right here. So the project overview, the project is for demolishing two existing residential units and replacing them with two new residential units. The reason I'm here before you tonight is because any time a residential structure is demolished, whether it's replaced or not, it needs to come to city council. The required findings include conditional use permit, development bonus, demolition, designer view, and variance. So here's the existing structures. There's two existing units. One is a one-bedroom. The other one is a very small two-bedroom. The total square footage is about 1,400 square feet for both units. Here's some more photos relating to the rear and side of the property. So when this went to Planning Commission for vote on December 11th, there were four ayes for recommendation, one no with reservations regarding the design review finding of active use. One member was recused, and one was, had an excused absence. The Planning Commission approved, or recommended the project to you, rather, with the following requested changes: to add details to the windows on the south elevation of the rear vill, pardon me, I'm going to try that again, to add details to the windows on the south elevation of the rear building that faces the parking lot, and to add more plants to the landscaping in the front. Both of those comments have been addressed, and those changes are reflected in the application materials that you've received and in this presentation. So here are the proposed renderings. Here where my cursor is, is the front of the property, the first unit, it's one-bedroom. And this is a view from the back of the property, looking at the second unit. And here is a side view from the south side of the property, which would be from the parking lot. However, there is a fence with landscaping against it all along the length of the property. The proposed site plan, pardon me, places the cars parking between the two buildings and at the rear of the parking. That's consistent with the design review findings that are required, and we'll discuss those later. Also, right here, you can see the architectural details around the windows that the Planning Commission discussed with the applicant. The proposed ground floor unit, both units have the primary living area and kitchens on the first floor, and whoa, sorry about that. And the second floor is where the bedrooms are located. So in the front unit, that would be one bedroom, and the rear, that would be two bedrooms. Oh, my apologies. There we go. So here are the elevations for the front unit, which is highlighted here. This is a view from the east, so the back of the unit. This is from the front with the fence in front of it, and this is what the front from the street would look like without the fence. In the rear unit, this is what faces the front unit between the buildings. Oh, no, I apologize. That's this one here. The east elevation here, so the back of it that opens up to the rear yard, and here it is highlighted in red. The proposed landscaping changes just added more vegetation to the front area, and they're, the project meets the requirements for both the front yard and the rear yard. So for zoning analysis, FAR, the maximum FAR, so floor area ratio, is .5. The property is approximately 3,000 square feet, which only provides 1,500 square feet of living area. The maximum building height is 30 feet, and the proposed project has a 20 feet 6 inches height, which is about the same as the wall that's on the north side of the property. The dwelling units per acre, the maximum with a bonus is two dwelling units. However, because there's removal of units, I'll talk about that later, there's also requirement to have two units. The off-street parking that's required is three spaces, and the applicant is proposing three spaces. And all the setbacks are met, except for the north side of the property, because there's a 20-foot wall along the entire length of the property, and having a building with three feet of separation from that would essentially create a canyon and not serve the purpose of providing light and air to both property owners and users. And as I mentioned before, for the residential density, replacing existing unit requires the city council approval, and the applicant is replacing both units as required in the code. So the conditional use permit findings, the proposed use is consistent with the general plan, and listed below are several goals and policies from the land use section. So it provides a diverse mix of housing types. It's the preservation of residential neighborhood and the character of the Doyle Street neighborhood. The land uses are consistent with the land use diagram in the general plan. It's consistent with the maximum building heights and floor area ratios of the general plan. The second conditional use permit finding is the characteristics and design of the proposed use are compatible with the neighborhood, meeting all of the design requirements in height setbacks, except for the one variance that's being requested, and proposed use is consistent with the neighborhood characteristics as required by the planning regulations. Thirdly, the proposed use is compatible with utilities and emergency response systems. This will not be adding any additional burden to those systems. Fourth, the proposed use contributes to the general well-being of the community, and so the proposed dwelling units of this location will provide new high-quality residential units and home ownership opportunities in an existing residential neighborhood. And fifth, the proposed use complies with the planning regulations overall. For the development bonus findings, to provide the two units, the proposed project is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. It's replacing two existing dwelling units of approximately the same size with a slightly higher square footage that falls within the FAR requirements. The proposed project minimizes the appearance of driveway and parking areas. That's correct. It provides parking between the two units and at the rear of the property. For demolition findings, the applicant will provide at least the same number of dwelling units as the demolished structure, which she is doing. And the replacement structures feature design quality that is least as high as the structures to be demolished, and the design is compatible with the neighborhood. The applicant has put a great effort into the design of these structures, and he'll be speaking with you about that. The elimination of the residential structures will not be material detrimental to the housing needs or public interest of affected neighborhoods. So as I mentioned, the demolished units are being replaced and providing the same number of bedrooms as the existing units with slightly more square footage. For major design review findings, we're getting through it. The design of the project is consistent with the general plan. Below are urban design guidelines, goals, and policies that it's consistent with: diversity of building types and scales, preservation of existing small-scale residential quality of older neighborhoods, infill residential, avoiding continuous rows of garages, and providing activation at the lot frontage and minimizing visible off-street parking. The design of the project conforms to the Emeryville Design Guidelines, and some of those items are using permeable paving and materials for the driveway, pathways, and surface parking areas, considering edge conditions and transition areas during site design that ensure compatibility. So the variance is consistent with that. And it's stepping down from the north, which would have the higher iconic Doyle complex to the parking lot to the south of it. The waste containers are screened. There's a location directly between both residential units for the waste, so that would be your trash, compost, recycling, and once again reducing the visual impact, visual and physical impact of parking. Thirdly, the project is of a high design quality that is compatible with and will not adversely affect the surrounding area. So staff and the Planning Commission overall felt that that was correct. For the setback variance, the proposal for which the variance is sought is consistent with the general plan. Once again, we have some restated general plan guidelines here. And the proposal for which the variance is sought is consistent with the general plan, that's the same. My apologies. Strict application of the planning regulations would deprive the property owner of privileges enjoyed by owners of other properties in the same zoning district. The existence of a 20-plus-foot tall wall along the exact border of the property is pretty atypical. That's not a standard condition, so this is a situation that staff feels it appropriate to have a variance. And a variance is necessary for the preservation of property rights and would not constitute a special privilege. And so a variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of substantial property rights that are possessed by other conforming properties that are not bordered by a wall over 20 feet in height. So saying that a property that did not have this challenge, they- So saying that a property that did not have this challenge, they wouldn't have any extra benefit than these folks. And granting the variance would not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. So it is against a 20-foot wall, so it would not be breaking the light or view from a solid wall. And the conditions upon which are unique, and it is atypical, as we discussed. So staff does recommend approval for this, and if you have any questions, I'm certainly available, as is the applicant who would like to present.
Mayor Atkin, I have a question about the variance and about, what is the composition of that wall on the north side, 20-foot high? What's it made out of?
It's a solid, what's the, it's concrete, it's a solid concrete wall.
And what did the fire department have to say about putting that so close to the wall?
So both fire and building met multiple times with the applicant, and we wouldn't bring anything to the Planning Commission that we felt could not be built, and they were pleased with the way this was being dealt with.
Fire doesn't see any problems with this at all?
I'm assuming George.
Yes.
Lots to do with that.
Both George and Guyan reviewed this project.
Okay.
It's not uncommon.
Yeah, it requires different building materials. Yeah.
I have a question.
Any other questions? Yeah.
Is the, on the south side of the driveway, next to the fence?
Yes.
Is that a planting strip for potential future vertical cypress trees, bamboo, something?
I'm trying to go back, I apologize to that.
In other words, is that what that is?
So there's existing plantings along there. So here's, I'm sorry, that keeps happening. So here's a photo of existing conditions from the parking lot, and that fence is to remain with those plantings on it. And there's not a whole lot of space between that fence and the driveway. So it could have other plantings there in the future, but not to the degree proposed that you're asking about right now.
Well, it looks like it's a couple of feet wide, maybe at the back, and three feet at the front. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I believe so.
It goes from three to five feet, and it's actually, the property line is where we're showing it on the first line between the driveway and the green. And so that's not really our property. It's just that the fence has been built off the property, and so we're just maintaining it as a green strip. And we'd rather not be putting in cypresses or something like that there, because it would block the solar access to the houses, not only these that we're proposing, but also if they got tall enough, it would affect the other neighbors. And we're just leaving it as green. It's, right now, it's an existing eight-foot-high fence, completely covered in ivy, and we thought it was fine. Be actually a nice place for some vegetable gardening, herb gardening, for the people who live there.
Any other questions for council? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open for public comment.
I believe the applicant wanted to make a presentation as well.
Thank you. Jump the gun here.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Alex Bergtroune. I'm the owner of the property, and I'm also an architect. And we've had our office, Studio Bergtroune Architects, at the corner of 55th and Doyle, just 100 feet down the street, for the last 17 years. We've owned this property for about 10 years, and we are extremely affectionate to Doyle Street. When I was looking for a place to have an office, I went to Doyle Street to look for a place, and I was lucky enough to find a place to rent there, and we've been there for 17 years. So when the opportunity came to buy this property, we took it, and we, because the way the economy is at this very moment, this very moment, we think we can actually manage to pull this off, to actually build this in this window. And we're excited about doing something that will be an improvement on this site. The existing houses that are there are actually, I think if you took an X-ray of the houses, you'd find termites holding each other's hands. And it's really, it's come a time where they are needed to be replaced. And so we're replacing with two units. The existing houses that are on the site are both 713 and 714 square feet each, and we have shifted the mix on that to be one that's roughly 1,000 square feet and one that's roughly 500 square feet. And the reason for doing that is that we realized that we could actually, there's been discussion about family-friendly housing. We actually think that this is an extremely interesting combination of houses on the same site, that it gives a diversity within this one site. And this is an incredibly narrow site, but it gives us some diversity that we could have something where a family could live in the back, they could then rent out the front unit, or they could have an in-law live in that unit, or they could have a home office space in the front. And it gives so many more opportunities than if it was just one single unit on that site. And so we're very, very excited about what we're proposing here from a functional programming point of view. And then we're really excited about what we're doing with, I think we're just excited with what we're trying to do design-wise, because we've been able to save the avocado tree that's been there. I fought to have that avocado tree saved many years ago when the icon was built, and I felt it's behoovev to me to save this thing as part of our development. And we also feel that it'll have some really nice eyes on the street, because creating this lantern on the front building is going to create a nice sense of light at night to the street, which we don't have right now. The way it is right now, between this very closed-in fence that's there on the street and the porch, which is a very dark porch on that front house, you really have no idea of what's going on inside. And this, we feel, is going to give this nice lantern effect. So we hope that you'll approve it. Can answer any questions you have. We've tried to be as green as possible with the building, and we think also with the planting, we've gone by all the Wookles recommendations and have picked plants that are only by that. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I'll open the public hearing for public comment.
First of all, I know the architect, I've met him. He's a nice guy. He opened up his architectural office for Councilwoman Jennifer West, running for City Council, and so I always have appreciated that. And so he's my kind of guy. However, I have a problem with the project. The biggest problem is, back in the 90s, we had a lot of, we had the beginning of a new program of developers coming in, tearing down buildings, especially in the north Emeryville residential neighborhood, tearing down existing homes, older homes, and putting in new homes. Sometimes, you know, increasing the density. And the people got really upset about that. And so written into our new general plan, there was provisions to stop that in the two older residential neighborhoods in the city, the Triangle Neighborhood, and then, of course, the North Emeryville Residential Neighborhood. And those two neighborhoods are identified in the general plan very clearly as what are called zones of stability, which means that we're not going to be tearing down the older houses. And so this sort of turns that on its ear. So we need to, are we just going to abandon the concept of zones of stability? I don't think we should do that. I mean, the general plan says, don't do that. To say that this preserves the older neighborhood, to tear down, you know, sort of a lovely old craftsman that can be remodeled or rehabilitated, that sort of makes a mockery of the words preserving an older neighborhood. And in addition, Charlie finds that this is, provides diverse housing type. In fact, no, what it does is the design, you know, even though it might be nice, it's a flat-roof, modernist structure, which is everywhere in Emeryville now. And what we're losing are the older houses, especially the craftsman-type houses. So this is not a diverse housing. This is adding to the stock of housing that we have right now, which is, you know, stucco and glass and flat roof and modern. So it doesn't contribute to the diversity of housing, it takes away from it. And then addition, the variance I have a problem with, because there's a wall there, yes, but the wall is there. It's sort of a tautology, where the city says yes to building this condo development several years back, and so now there's a condition now that, so we have to provide a variance for this project. So it's sort of, you're complaining about the weather, but you're the one making the weather. So it's, it's sort of a cynical way to allow for variances to be granted. So I don't think that that's a good enough reason for a variance. Talking about enjoying the property is going to be harmed without this variance is sort of, the existing property owner is there enjoying the property, and so I think that makes a mockery of that. I think we should pay attention to zones of stability. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rich Ambrose, still archaeologist and historian. I don't get a sense of what those buildings to be demolished look like. I don't know how old they are. It sounds like one of them is a craftsman. I happen to like craftsman houses. But has there been a historical evaluation of the two structures threatened by demolition? And should, maybe you could ask yourselves, do we have to knock down all the old houses just for bigger houses and profit-oriented? Anyway, I'm a big fan of keeping old neighborhoods old, old-looking, and really old. So anyway, I don't know the answer in terms of how old the two structures are. I couldn't tell from the photos. Anyway, I'm just asking the question. Thank you.
Hi, Judy Timmel. I live two lots over from this project, to the south. And as far as I know, our residents that live in the cohousing initially were concerned about eyes on the street. But seeing the large windows and the two-story, large windows that are on Doyle Street, we, I think, have been convinced that this would be a positive addition in that sense. There was a carjacking right in front of that property just last year. And so we were concerned about the eyes-on-street aspect, and I think this really does address from that perspective. There are no other single-family dwellings on our block, so the two that are existing, I don't find that they really fit in with the rest of the street anyway. So yes, I'm generally in favor of maintaining single-family dwellings and existing housing stock. I think they're in very poor condition, and that I think this design really does make a positive addition to our street, although I'm speaking for myself, of course. I wish maybe Alex might reconsider the stucco. I'm really bored with stucco, and there's a lot of brick on our street. I think it would be lovely to have some brick accents. Anyway, thank you.
Any other public comments? Public comments in the public hearing are now closed. Council discussion? Mayor Atkin, I happen to agree with Judy Timmel. I think this will be an improvement on the street. Those two houses that are there, they don't look like craftsmen to me, and I've been inside them, and they are crumbling. I think you're right, the bugs are holding the house up. I think especially I like the idea that the cohousing people focused on the lantern effects, where you'd have more light in that area, it's a dark area, and you need more. Right now, you walk by and you don't know who's behind that place. I think it's a nice design, and I like the idea that we are going to keep the fence with the beautiful vines on it. That'll go a long way. And you swear you're going to keep the avocado tree. That is a superb tree. So I'm very much in favor of this project, and I hope we move ahead with it. Any other council comments?
I'd like to say that I think it really, I love the design, and I think the social aspects are marvelous to divide the two units that way. I think in the long run, we'll make a better community. So I'm impressed with the.
That a motion, Scott? I'll second it. Any other comments?
I just wanted to comment that I appreciate that we live in a community where we do try to maintain and preserve architecturally significant structures. That said, I think our staff and Planning Commission would have told us if they deemed these buildings to be architecturally significant, and I'm also satisfied with this plan.
I have a comment, Ruth.
Yeah.
So I initially asked a couple of questions about the staff report, and I just want to share that here. I too am supportive of the plan, but I just want to put these clarifying questions out there, because I just want to shift our thinking a little bit. Here on page 237, one of the findings that we have to make, and talking about the proposed use being consistent with the general plan, a mix of housing types, a diversity of housing types to accommodate a variety of household sizes and incomes. The proposed development maintains the existing unit mix while providing home ownership opportunities. When I looked at that, I thought, why wouldn't we favor or want, say, a three-bedroom unit on this site? Because we know that in town, we don't have a lot of three-bedroom units. And of course, this was not, this is not what's written down in the general plan, right? It talks about maintaining the unit mix. But I'd like staff, and I'd like the council, maybe to rethink this, right? That if what we're looking for is just the replacement of the existing unit mix, we are going to consistently have, right, that 7% of three-bedrooms in Emeryville. And, you know, all of that burden can't fall on one project, but I think that it's something that I would like to talk about as a council. That said, I'm also supportive of the project.
Well, I'll comment, and I guess everything is in the eye of the beholder. I do have some concerns that these just look too boxy, and they're not very interesting to me, but I'm just one person. I also am very tired of flat roofs in Emeryville, and I would prefer a gabled roof. So I don't really like how these look. And then, secondly, there's a parking spot underneath the building, so that creates a soft story. And I'm just, in earthquake country, I just don't think that that makes a lot of sense to have a soft story. And I guess I join, I didn't hear Commissioner Moss's comments about design review, but perhaps I echo some of what he found issue with. So I'm not enamored of the design, but I understand that the existing structures are very depreciated and in bad shape. So I'm intrigued with your idea to actually create a larger unit.
Mayor Atkin?
Yeah.
Could I just comment on your comment on the soft story issue?
Yeah.
I'm not an engineer, so, you know, I'm just sort of talking off the top of my head here. But my understanding is, these buildings will be designed to meet current seismic safety standards, and they would not be subject to the same kind of soft-story collapse issues that you see with older buildings in an earthquake. So just because it looks like that doesn't mean that it would be soft-story, quote-unquote, in the structural sense.
I thought that, by definition, what I'm looking at is a soft story.
No, as the chief building official explained in the informational report that you received, I think it was at your last meeting, you can't tell a soft-story building by looking at it. He's gone around the city and done a windshield survey and identified, I think he said, seven buildings that could potentially be soft story, but the only way he can know is to have a structural engineer actually analyze the building. And a new building would never be built to that, you know, to the definition of soft story.
Ball question.
Well, there was a motion, is that, who seconded it?
I did. It was Scott and Nora.
Okay. Please call the roll. Councilmember Asher.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Council Vice Mayor Davis.
Aye.
And Mayor Atkin.
I'll approve it, but with my reservations so noted. So thank you. This takes us to our first policy item, which is an ordinance regulating sleeping in vehicles.
This takes us to our first policy item, which is an ordinance regulating sleeping in vehicles. Michael Guena.
I'm Michael Guena, Assistant City Attorney. Tonight, I'm presenting on two ordinances regarding sleeping in vehicles. The staff recommendation is that the City Council adopt the first reading of the ordinance that would repeal the existing Chapter 10 of Title IV of the Emeryville Municipal Code titled "Use of Recreational Vehicles." This ordinance prohibits occupying vehicles for sleeping purposes. And last year, the Federal Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals struck down a similar ordinance from the City of Los Angeles. If the City Council wishes to continue regulating the use of vehicles for sleeping or habitation, then staff has prepared a replacement ordinance that the City Council may adopt that first reading tonight. However, staff does not recommend adoption of that replacement ordinance. By way of background, the current Chapter 10 of Title IV prohibits persons from occupying a vehicle for sleeping purposes, and the full text of that ordinance is in your staff report. Last year, the Federal Ninth Circuit struck down a similar ordinance that was adopted by the City of Los Angeles. That ordinance prohibited people from using vehicles as living quarters. And in 2010, the city began enforcement of that ordinance after receiving complaints of people living in their vehicles and dumping trash and garbage in the public right-of-way. That ordinance was eventually challenged and the Ninth Circuit struck it down as unconstitutionally vague for two reasons. First, because the LA Code did not define the key term "living quarters," the court found that the ordinance failed to provide fair notice to persons that would be able to understand the conduct that was prohibited. In other words, what does it mean to use a vehicle for living quarters? And that was never defined in the ordinance. Secondly, because the key term was undefined, the court found that the LA ordinance allowed or even encouraged arbitrary and discriminatory enforcement, particularly against the homeless population. The current Emeryville Code suffers from the same vagueness issues, same vagueness problems as the LA ordinance. The Emeryville Code prohibits persons from occupying a vehicle for sleeping purposes. However, our code does not define or describe what is meant by the terms "occupy" or "sleeping purposes." And therefore, if the Emeryville Code were applied and challenged, a reviewing court would likely find the city's regulation unconstitutionally vague under the LA analysis. Therefore, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt the first reading that would rescind that, the current ordinance. As I mentioned, if the City Council wishes to continue regulating the use of vehicle habitation, then staff has prepared an ordinance which is designed to address the vagueness issues raised in the Ninth Circuit ruling. However, I will emphasize that there is no need for the city to regulate in this area and therefore, staff is not recommending adoption of that replacement ordinance. The replacement ordinance does contain the following provisions. It prohibits people from remaining in their vehicles between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM for more than 20 minutes at a time while parked on any public right-of-way. Before the police department could issue a citation for violation of the ordinance, the officer must first issue a written warning to the occupant of the vehicle. And any violation of the ordinance would be punishable as an infraction with monetary penalties. Again, I'll note that the City Council can choose different hours of regulation. So for example, hours other than 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. The City Council can also choose a different length of time in which a person can occupy a vehicle, that is, more or less than 20 minutes. Or the City Council may choose not to regulate in this field at all. Regarding alternatives, if the council wishes not to adopt the replacement ordinance, other existing provisions of our municipal code will continue to regulate the use of vehicles for habitation. So for example, the city currently enforces parking regulations, which prohibit parking for more than 72 hours at one, at any one location, or parking in violation of posted street signs. The municipal code also contains provisions prohibiting littering on streets or in parks. This ordinance, or both of these ordinances, were considered by the Public Safety Committee at their December meeting and the committee recommended repeal of the existing ordinance and recommended against adoption of a replacement ordinance. So on that basis, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt the first reading of an ordinance repealing the current Chapter 10 of Title IV. Staff is not recommending adoption of the replacement ordinance. However, if the City Council wishes to continue regulating in this area, then staff is seeking direction on the hours and length of time with which to regulate persons remaining in their vehicles. So that's the conclusion of my report and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Move to read by title only.
Is there a second?
I'll make comments.
Yeah, that comes later.
Read by title only, then we'll have a comment.
No, I mean, the one, I don't know which, can you clarify which ordinance?
7.1.1.
The one to repeal the existing.
That's right.
Okay. An ordinance to the City Council of the City of Emeryville repealing Chapter 10 of Title IV of the Emeryville Municipal Code, quote, "Use of recreational vehicles," end quote.
All right. So I have a question.
Okay.
And then I know public wants to speak to this. Why? Just, why is this just pertaining to recreational vehicles? I thought we wanted to prohibit commercial truck parking and sleeping in trucks overnight and that kind of thing.
Well, are you talking about the replacement ordinance?
First, what we're doing now is we're trying to repeal the existing ordinance, which is unconstitutional. Can we get, work through that and then?
Well, we, people want to speak on this, first of all, before we take a vote. But how come, how come we don't have an ordinance about truck, sleeping in trucks or is that a different ordinance?
Well, the way that vehicles are defined in the current Chapter 10 of Title IV is, it does not cover trucks. And is that right?
Well, there's a portion of the current ordinance that says any vehicle that is used for sleeping purposes is defined as a recreational vehicle. So a commercial truck that has a bed for sleeping and they sleep in it on the city street under our current ordinance is considered a recreational vehicle.
So we had a real problem a few years back on all the H-streets where there was commercial truck parking. Then we put up signs saying, "No truck parking." So I'm not sure if that solved the problem, but I don't know, I just, it was odd to just think about repealing something for recreational vehicles when we're, if and when we're trying to.
Well, the point is that the way that the current ordinance defines vehicles is fairly expansive. If we were to, if the City Council were to repeal the current Chapter 10 of Title IV and not adopt any other ordinances, the city can and still does have the ability to regulate the use of commercial vehicles parked on the city street by posting street signs, for example, that say, "No commercial parking" between certain hours, for example. And I believe that we currently do that. Is that right?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you.
So the city would still retain the ability to regulate parking for vehicle types and for various hours.
All right. Before other council members weigh in, we have a speaker card on this, so I'll invite public comment at this point. John Bouders.
Normally, I wouldn't make this request, but if I do go over three minutes, I hope you might entertain. I know we have a long evening. I just have a few things I want to do. Provide just a little context to my comments. Provide a little information about what is really at issue here, I think, with this ordinance and the replacement proposed, and then a couple of suggestions. As a measure of.
I'm not going to grant you more than three minutes.
All right, then I'll talk fast. So as a measure of background, I've represented people experiencing homelessness as an attorney for over eight years. I've represented close to 3,000 people in a variety of legal matters. More than 22% of people who are homeless in the United States live in California. More than 25% of the homeless in the United States who are veterans live in California. There are many definitions of homelessness, but HUD has a very limited and narrow definition that it uses to define homelessness in its annual count. California doesn't just have the highest number of people who are homeless. At 2013, the AHR count was 136,000, but the highest percentage of people who are unsheltered in the United States. 67% of people who are homeless in California have absolutely no shelter. Comparatively, the second highest state, New York, which has 77,000 homeless individuals, has only 5% of its people unsheltered. Last year, 81 cities in the Western United States passed bans related to the sleeping in vehicles. That's 119% increase over the prior year. The only increase greater in number in bans other than sleeping in vehicles is sleeping in public spaces. C E L University is the only place that has done a comprehensive study to date on the issue of vehicular residence. Since 2001, the number of people in their study who experience homelessness that sleep in a vehicle is roughly 30% of the total homeless population. There are four primary reasons why people who live in their vehicles should be protected from ticketing and seizure as a matter of good social policy. Number one is personal safety. In the absence of adequate shelter, as we have here in California, many people rely on a vehicle for safety at night. Number two is rest. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights, Article 24, provides that rest is a human right. The body has a physiological need to rest. Criminalizing resting in parks and vehicles and providing other civil penalties for that puts a person in a heightened state of anxiety. The average lifespan for a person who experiences chronic homelessness is 49 years of age. Number three is work and medical reasons. It's a myth that people who are homeless do not work. In fact, 44% of people who were queried in a point-in-time count recently identified as having some form of work. Cars are a form of transportation. Ticketing cars that could be subject to seizure takes away a person's only source of income at times. Number four, overcoming financial hurdles. Tickets that are, and fines owed to municipality are not dischargeable in a Chapter 7 bankruptcy, which is the most common form of discharge that people who are homeless with no assets go through. Even in a Chapter 11, you have to restructure and repay the debt to the city. So fining people for living in a vehicle, actually, they never escape the fine. So how do we, how does this really play out? For those of us who don't live in cars, we don't understand this, but we make the same decision every day. We make decisions related to our survival.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Barb? Hi, good evening. I'm Barb Singleton. When I first read this, it immediately struck me that you're targeting the homeless. And then I read through it and it said that it came about through a safety committee meeting. So I'd like to know, how exactly did it come about? Somebody read the LA Times or whatever? Another thing that came to mind was, how will the police enforce this 20 minutes? Are they gonna, I just can't picture it. If you're sitting in the marina, with everything else that the police has to do, how do you know what somebody, I mean, I don't know, 20 minutes? And you're, I guess the reason this is coming up, anyway, the whole unconstitutional, it just, I'd like more information about why this has even come up. Thank you.
Mayor Atkin, I think there's some confusion here. This first ordinance that we're talking about, oh, pardon me. I'll reserve my remarks.
I didn't even know we had this ordinance on the books and I've violated the ordinance many, many times, myself. So come home from work, I'm really tired, listen to the music, I fall asleep. It's happened many times in front of my own home. So click, click, I guess. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. I mean, why do we want to be so mean spirited? And I think Mr. Bouders made some really excellent points. You know, I can make light of it, you know, I have a home to sleep in, but I actually have violated the law many times. So I'm, you know, I'm making light of it. But Mr. Bouders has made a really excellent point. I wish, you know, I wish he could have spoken longer. I was intrigued. It's just mean spirited. I mean, it's really mean spirited. There's nothing, I can't countenance us being that kind of city that criminalizes people for sleeping in their cars. And I, you know, it's just so easy for everyone in this room to sort of, you know, smugly look at people sleeping in their cars and think that, you know, we got to clean this up. And it, you know, it takes, you know, a little more empathy, I think, to put yourself in their position. And I just hate the idea of criminalizing poor people and criminalizing homeless people. And it's just, it's just mean spirited. And so let's just get rid of this. I didn't even know we had it. I'm disturbed that we had that. And let's just, you know, be a civilized city. Thanks.
So Vice, oh. Go ahead.
I realize we are talking about the repeal of this right now, but I just want to add that I have seen a couple of times a woman be moved from her car when she had parked on Powell Street. And I felt if that had been me, I would consider Powell Street to be a safe place because it's opposite the police station and it's somewhere I could be safe if I had to sleep in my car. And I have families that sleep in a car because they have nowhere else to go. The bigger issues, of course, are addressing homelessness and affordable housing. You spoke about housing earlier on. Just looking at housing where we live, 3,500, 4,000 even for a place. I think it's ridiculous. It's insane and we have to do something. So addressing the big problem, what are we going to do with homeless families, homeless veterans, homeless people? If they're sleeping in the car, can we find a safe space for them to sleep with some facilities that we can do? We have to do something and coming up with various codes is not the answer. We need to deal with this and I think we can be leaders in this area and we have skilled people with lots of knowledge. We have John. He's a great person to talk to about this. So I think we, we need to do something about this. And so repeal this and then start working on what are we going to do with the homeless people. Thank you.
Come forward.
Is it possible to yield time?
Is it what?
May I yield my time?
You want to give John your minutes?
There's a precedent for that.
It's at the pleasure of the chair.
What's your name?
My name is Adam Maloon.
Hi, Adam.
How are you?
Yeah, you can have John talk for your three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move right to my suggestions. I have three suggestions for the council to consider beyond the scope of just the ordinance that you're talking about this evening. Solutions to people who are living in cars, three. Number one, police's ambassadors. The City of Fullerton, I've worked with the City of Fullerton in the past on this issue. They do ride-alongs with members of the county behavioral health department. Rather than giving tickets, they give opportunities for people to connect with people who actually have resources. Number two, provide public facilities as an invitation into the city and into solutions. So I know we recently discussed at the Housing Committee, there's going to be renovation to Joseph Emory Park. There's been a question about whether a public restroom would be suitable there or elsewhere in the city. I actually personally know three of the individuals in my neighborhood who are currently living in their vehicle. I won't go into the details of how they meet other physiological needs they have, but by providing services to people, we give them a more human existence and it makes them more amenable to response and responsive to the types of offers we make to them as citizens and advocates. There's a woman who literally lives down the street from me who is two months away from moving into the lakeside in Oakland, which is an affordable senior housing complex. She's been in her vehicle for two years. Ticketing her or not giving her access to services in a situation like hers would be devastating to her future. And the third is considering dedicated safe parking spaces. The City of Santa Barbara does this. They take several of their city-owned lots and they actually put two or three spots in the lot where a person applies to the city to have that spot free to them as a parking space that's not on a city street and it's in a space that the city controls. A nonprofit manages the roll call, so the application process for the city in partnership with them. And what happens is, is one of the conditions. them. And what happens is, is one of the conditions of getting that lot, which removes them from the scope of the 72-hour move-your-vehicle ordinance, is that as a condition, they have to have a weekly check-in with someone from behavioral health or from a city social worker. It connects them further to opportunities and things that give them solutions to homelessness. And I would ask the city to consider those in the future.
Any other public comment? Vice Mayor Davis has moved to repeal the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
I think this is by acclamation without exception. Am I right?
Right, yes, yes.
All right, good, all right.
Oh, go ahead, Jack.
I do want to just follow along with what Ruth and John have said, which is that...and I also did not know that this was on the books. And we need to have a better plan in our city to draw people toward resources. And one of the things, and I forgot to say this this evening when we were looking at the Sherwin-Williams design, we have to stop building parks without bathrooms. We just...we have to stop doing that. My time's up.
All right. So I don't want to assume anything here about 7.1.2.
I'd like to propose that we not consider this.
Okay.
Just trash it.
I think so. That takes us to...
Mayor Atkins?
Yeah.
If I may, although it's been on the books, the police department has not been enforcing the sleeping in the vehicles. We do respond to complaints of litter. We do respond to complaints of people being parked there. We do ask them to move. We do mark for 72 hours tow, but we don't cite, we don't arrest. And when we can, we do make it available to them that we do have shelter spaces with the Berkeley Shelter. So although it's been on the books, we are not out there making the people worse off by...
Thank you for clarifying that.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to let you know that we are bringing a report to your next council meeting on the 3rd on our homelessness strategy. And as part of that, there will be some discussion of the bathrooms.
Okay, thank you. All right. So moving on to another weighty issue, citywide minimum wage. Michelle, I see you poised here to spring up for your report.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Atkins and members of the Emeryville City Council. I'm Michelle De Guzman. I'm with the Economic Development and Housing Division of the city. And tonight, I am here to speak to you about an update on the consideration of a minimum wage for the city of Emeryville. We have two existing wage policies, which I will...I've already recently reported to you in August, so just very briefly. Two of them are in place. One is Measure C, which applies primarily to hotel employees. It also has some additional requirements in addition to minimum compensation relating to labor standards for hotel workers. We also have a living wage ordinance, which was adopted in 2006. It applies to employees of and contractors with the city. It was originally $12 per hour. It's increased by the local CPI, and it's currently about $14 per hour. Prior evaluation, the city has looked at the concept of a citywide minimum wage a few times. Back in 2006 was the first time it was considered. Measure C passed at the November 2005, and this was looked at as a comprehensive wage policy. Measure C, the living wage, was looked at and adopted, as well as the citywide minimum wage. And the sort of the underlying concept behind all of this policy discussion was the concept of the idea of a livable wage. And some different ways you could conceive of that would be certainly indexing the local cost of living to a federal minimum wage, looking at a basic needs budget. What would be a self-sufficiency wage for a household in order to support themselves without any additional financial support? The direction in 2006 was to defer consideration of a citywide minimum wage until Measure C and the living wage were in place for a sufficient amount of time to determine the administrative burdens associated with them. In August 2014, the summary of those considerations were presented to the sitting council at the time, as well as an evaluation of the administrative burden and recent activity related to citywide minimum wages. And just really briefly, the administrative burden that was reported to the council in August was that the living wage, primarily the enforcement relied on human resources and the city attorney's department. The time spent on that was approximately six hours on an annual basis. Violations were complaint-based, and during the period that was looked at, fiscal year 1314, there were no complaints. And my understanding is there have not been any complaints on the living wage ordinance since its inception. Measure C, 1314, is a stabilized year. There was litigation associated when Measure C was first put in place, and they used a substantial amount of city staff time. But since that litigation has been resolved, it takes approximately 22 hours of finance department and city attorney time. And that is because that Measure C requires hotels to be actively permitted under Measure C. So those departments have to actively review the payroll and other documentation provided by the hotels. And the permit is not issued unless they actually comply with the ordinance. So that's why there's additional time associated with that. Recent minimum wage activity, back in 2006, there were several cities that already did have citywide minimum wages: DC, Santa Fe, Albuquerque, San Francisco, and San Jose. In 2014, there was a significant amount of activity that occurred. In August, what had passed at that time was Richmond, Seattle, and Berkeley, and there were ballot initiatives for San Francisco and Oakland. Since that time, the ballot initiatives were passed in those two cities fairly overwhelmingly. And Mountain View and Sunnyvale adopted citywide minimum wage ordinances as well. I believe they did those in December. The dates escape me at the moment. However, those were pegged specifically to match the San Jose citywide minimum wage. And they did that with...those councils did that with an eye to creating a regional minimum wage. Going back to the 2006 consideration, at the time, staff looked at that. One of the concerns expressed was that Emeryville would be the only city within a larger region that had a citywide minimum wage, and there was concerns about the relative competitiveness. And certainly, given the recent activity, that issue about being the lone participants in the region is certainly greatly dissipated. Other major cities that are looking at proposals, Los Angeles, both the city council and the mayor have put forth separate proposals for a citywide minimum wage, and this is for the city of Los Angeles. San Diego had a more complex history in this past calendar year, in that their city council approved a citywide minimum wage, their mayor vetoed it, and then their city council overrode his veto. And so now it has currently been put on the ballot as a referendum. And so that will go in November, and there's some discussion as to when that would...if the referendum does not pass and the minimum wage is put into play, whether or not that'll be retroactive to the original ordinance or not. The purpose of this is just to sort of give some context of that recent activity. Emeryville, the wage that is on here is actually the Measure C wage. So that's just to sort of show the context. The lowest one at the bottom is the statewide minimum wage, and that is set by state law, so it will rise to $10 in 2016. And then there are no further increases anticipated. San Francisco, you can see, is at the top, and they have graduated increases, and then thereafter to 2018, and thereafter it increases by CPI. There's a detailed table in your report that goes through the specific wages, but the purpose of this report is to...or this table is to show the relative wages. You can see Oakland is just below that of San Francisco. Berkeley, theirs is set by ordinance as well, so they have some increases. 2016 is the last increase, and then it remains flat. And the San Jose, Mountain View, Sunnyvale, which is what that abbreviation is, yes.
So, Michelle, just to clarify, when we're looking at this up here, when folks are looking at this at home, the light blue line that's somewhere near the middle that says Emeryville, that's just folks that are covered under Measure C.
Yes.
We have lots of folks, right, that are working for minimum wage in Emeryville, and that's the line at the bottom.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the statewide minimum wage.
And where would our city living wage fall?
I did not put that in, but the current city minimum wage is...the living wage, I'm sorry.
Living wage, 1403.
Is $14 per hour, and it increases by CPI. So it would be relatively high. It would be, you know, below the...well, it actually currently would be above what San Francisco has, because they are, even under their new ordinance in 2016, going to be at 1225. So the citywide...the living wages for all of the cities, which I didn't analyze for this particular report, are much higher than the citywide minimum wage. And all the jurisdictions that have minimum wages also have a living wage as well. And sorry, just to sort of finish up. So the...just since I use an abbreviation, the SJMF-MV, sorry, S is the San Jose, Mountain View, Sunnyvale example. So what staff also evaluated since August was the implementation efforts of Berkeley and Oakland. Berkeley's has been in place for about a quarter, and Oakland has not yet begun the implementation, although they've begun the notification and rollout process. So staff spoke to the folks in the two cities who will be responsible for the implementation and administration. Both cities currently are spending about one dedicated staff person to managing the program, and that person manages both the outreach and the enforcement. Enforcement in both those cities will be complaint-based, and they have an internal process through which the complaints are received, investigated, addressed, and then there's also an appeals process that both cities...they vary slightly, but they're essentially the same. And so most of that is...will be managed by the...at the city staff level. And just to look at a larger...to larger jurisdictions, both San Francisco and Seattle, San Francisco has an existing Office of Labor Standards Enforcement. Seattle is in the process of establishing one. And for both cities, they will manage this citywide minimum wage, as well as both cities have some other labor-related legislation that is enforced by this particular office. So San Francisco has a very robust Office of Labor Standards with 18 staff. Seattle is just starting out, so they have seven. But, you know, San Francisco has a...they have their living wage also done by this office. They have their own healthcare requirements. They have family-friendly requirements, as well as newly instituted retail labor standards, which will be discussed later in this presentation. So staff is putting forth in terms of looking and doing an analysis of what a minimum wage might look for...look at in Emeryville, some suggestions that could be looked at. And what is proposed here would be a model that is largely based on the Oakland model. And the basis for that is Oakland is the largest city in Alameda County. It is our immediate neighbor. It creates a lot of the regional economic context. And so these suggestions all stem from that, which is a 1225 initial citywide minimum wage per hour, if it were to start in 2015, with CPI escalations thereafter. Exemptions would be if there is a collective bargaining agreement in place. And Measure C, and the reason this is mentioned in this way is because while if there's a higher wage, the hotel workers would experience the higher wage, there are other aspects of Measure C that are not specifically addressed in a citywide minimum wage, and the idea would be to maintain those while still ensuring that the wages would be concurrent with...throughout all employment in the city. And then also to include a sick leave requirement, one hour for every 30 hours worked accrual, with a cap at 40 hours for employees of small businesses. That would be, in this case, defined as businesses with less than 10 employees, and a cap at 72 hours for all other businesses. The main issue, the concern back in 2006, and I think moving forward, is how this would actually be implemented. And the implementation sort of has two main components, the outreach and inquiry handling, as well as the actual enforcement on complaints or violations. There are four main ways that was looked at here. One would be internal administration, which is the model that is being used by Berkeley and Oakland at this point, San Francisco as well. Joint administration, which would be in agreement with neighboring cities. And Mountain View is currently considering doing something similar with San Jose, and their ordinance included a provision for further consideration of that model. Contract administration is an option in which the city would contract out to a private service provider to do this, or to look at it as a private right of action in which enforcement would occur through the judicial system. And while city staff would take care of administration, the actual enforcement would not happen at the staff level. And under the prior three, there would be some level of staff oversight related to enforcement. So that is the citywide minimum wage. The next major component that has come to play in terms of activities related to workers' rights is San Francisco recently passed labor standards, essentially, under what is their...they call their Predictable Scheduling and Fair Treatment for Formula Retail Employees Ordinance. That was fairly recently passed in October 2014. The purpose behind that was to assist employees in meeting their basic needs and achieving economic security. In the case of San Francisco, they have a definition in their planning code of formula retail. And they define that as any business that has 20 or more retail establishments worldwide. And it is to those particular retail establishments that this ordinance applies. The elements of that ordinance require at least two weeks' notice of work schedules, notice of changes in work schedule, and a compensation schedule if those notice of changes come in less than seven days. Also, compensation for unused on-call shifts, and providing part-time employees with the same access to hourly pay, time off, and eligibility for promotions as full-time employees. The staff evaluated what would be needed on a fairly aggressive schedule for the evaluation and implementation of a citywide minimum wage and/or labor standards. And this was...this is one proposal to consider that. Over February and March, conduct community meetings with affected parties, which would include residents, businesses, business owners, as well as employees, doing online surveying as well, in addition to the direct community outreach, to make as many avenues for participation available in April or May, depending on the scheduling of the meetings, reporting back to council on the community input. And then after that, if directed by council, beginning the consideration and adoption of an ordinance by council, as well as developing the administrative instructions that would be associated with that, as well as potentially negotiate any administration or enforcement agreements if they were needed based on the enforcement mechanism considered. And that would be particularly if what was being looked at was a joint administration or a contractual administration. And either late 2015...or, sorry, late 2015 or early 2016, that the minimum wage... And either late 2015, or, sorry, late 2015 or early 2016, that the minimum wage and other related provisions could become effective once the ordinance and administrative methods were put in place. So the direction that staff is looking for at this point is, first and foremost, does the city wish to consider establishing a citywide minimum wage? If so, should public comment be solicited based on the elements proposed in this report, modeled after the Oakland initiative, or a different model or structure? Is the proposed methodology acceptable? That was that timeframe that I just ran through. That currently does not include a detailed economic analysis, and that was done in the matter, in the interest of addressing the matter expeditiously, and the fact that there has been quite a lot of activity regionally on this issue, and UC Berkeley has done extensive economic impact studies of Berkeley, Oakland, as well as Los Angeles and San Diego. So there is existing scholarship on the minimum wage, and the reasonableness of whether that can be extrapolated to Emeryville's particular situation. However, if a detailed economic impact analysis is required, that can be brought forward later this year, although that may slightly delay that adoption schedule that was recommended. And then the second element of that is the labor standards. What had been brought to the council in the past was more related to specifically wages. The labor standards addresses a broader scope of issues related to labor issues. And does the council wish to further analyze an ordinance stressing predictable scheduling and fair treatment for retail workers? And if so, should it apply only to formula retail? Should the elements have the same elements as the San Francisco ordinance, or are there other elements or additional elements that should be addressed or included? And lastly, should these predictable scheduling and fair treatments, labor standards, be included along with a citywide minimum wage ordinance, or should it be considered separately? Oops. And with that, my presentation has concluded, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Before I open the floor to council, there's lots of speakers, members of the public wishing to speak, so I'm going to call you up by threes, and you could just kind of line up to speak. Juana Tapia Cruz, Jorge Hernandez, Gary Jimenez, Jose Vasquez. Those are the first four. As a three, it's four people.
I wasn't hoping or expecting to be the first, but sometimes somebody's got to be the first and take the lead, right? Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Gary Jimenez, I'm president of the Lift Up Oakland Coalition, and I'm a vice president with SEIU Local 10 to 1, and I would just like to say you have some wonderful staff to hear that are members of ours. We helped pass the Measure FF and Proposition J in San Francisco, we were an integral part of that, reaching out with the community, hundreds of volunteers. In Oakland alone, we gathered over 33,000 signatures in order to put it on the ballot. For us, though, the question is no longer if $15 an hour is what we need, but when we get people to $15 an hour. People are still hurting. Housing, we listened tonight for over two hours about housing and affordable housing. People are hurting, and they need a way to get into housing. And we can look at affordable housing in the way we've looked at it tonight, but the question is, if people still can't afford the affordable housing, is it affordable housing? We have to bring people up out of poverty. $15 is definitely a baseline, just a baseline, for dignity for people. Minimum wage justice for people in our communities. People willing to work 40 hours a week should not be living in poverty. They should be able to live with dignity and respect, not on the public rolls, but being able to earn their way to support their families. We saw the public make their minds up over with the Lift Up Oakland campaign. At the beginning, we worked with our public, our communities, as a labor group, and other labor groups, but also with community groups, and we settled on 1225. That was a little over a year and a half ago, when the dialogue in the country was a little bit different at the time. We've seen that change. By the end of the campaign, people wanted $15 an hour, and were questioning why so low at 1225, when it was still one of the highest numbers in the country. So Measure FF moved, and it passed with an 82% rounding up. I think we should have gone for 15, but we didn't. Hindsight is 2020, right? But tonight, you have the opportunity to look through the hindsight of Oakland and Measure FF, to create a just path to lead people in our communities out of poverty and on the path to 15. So I would ask you, nationally, regionally, locally, the dialogue has changed. People's minds in America are made up, we've got to do something to get people out of poverty. America deserves a $15 an hour minimum wage, and you can help make that happen, as in San Francisco and some other places that have actually started to move that there. So I'm asking you as a council tonight to be bold, to take leadership in the region, to be visionary and take that leadership and lead a way, a strong path to 15. So I want to commend the study, because there's tremendous things in this ordinance that is being proposed, or that staff has proposed, some wonderful things. But I think the one thing that needs to be included in that is not just stopping at 1225, but actually creating a pathway to 15, and then adding CPI beyond that. Thank you.
Juana Tapia Cruz here.
Buenos noches.
Good evening. Mi nombre es Juana Tapia Cruz.
My name is Juana Tapia Cruz.
Es mi primera vez en una junta como estas, so estoy un poco nerviosa.
This is my first time in a meeting like this, so I'm a little bit nervous.
Estoy aquí porque quiero decir que queremos luchar por el, para subir el salario mínimo en Emeryville.
I'm here to say that we want to be part of the fight to raise the minimum wage here in Emeryville.
Soy una mamá, soy una mamá soltera y no quisiera llegar a la situación de querer dormir en la calle junto con mi hija. Es por eso que estamos pidiendo un salario justo para tener una mejor aseguranza.
And I am a single mother, I don't want to get to the point that I have to not be able to afford my rent and live in the street with my daughter, who's 16 years old. And that's why we want better salary, our quality affordable health insurance.
Y mejores beneficios para todos los trabajadores de Emeryville, así como lo están aumentando en el área de Oakland, San Francisco, y otros lugares. Están agarrando más que nosotros en Emeryville, ellos en menos de seis meses están agarrando cuatro dólares con 25 cuando en Emeryville no hemos agarrado ni siquiera un penny o cinco centavos más.
So that's why we want better wages and benefits for all the workers in Emeryville. We don't think it's fair that all the workers in the area surrounding us, in Berkeley and Oakland, have been able to raise their minimum wage by at least $4.25, and here we haven't even seen a raise in a penny.
Trabajo en Oaks Corner, un block aquí. Mañana vamos a estar haciendo una acción, una diligencia hacia nuestra gerencia. Nos gustaría si nos pudieran ayudar los consulars de aquí de Emeryville, sería mucha ayuda para todos nosotros. No somos muchos, pero pienso que la ciudad de Emeryville es muy grande para ayudar a todos los empleados de Emeryville en general, y principalmente mi compañía.
And I also want to mention that I'm a worker at the Oaks, I'm a worker at the Oaks Corner, which is just a block from here, and I wanted to let everybody know that tomorrow we're going to do a picket at 5:00 PM in front of the Oaks Corner, and we want to invite everybody to come support us. I know that we're not many workers at the Oaks Corner, but we know there are many workers and supporters in Emeryville, and we'd like to invite you all to come support us tomorrow.
Muchas gracias y buenas noches.
Thank you very much, good evening.
Jorge Hernandez?
Mi nombre es Jose Vasquez.
My name is Jose Vasquez.
Tengo seis años trabajando en el Oaks Corner.
I've been working at the Oaks Corner for six years.
Mis compañeros y yo pertenemos al United Here Local 2850.
And me and my coworkers, we're part of the Union Unite Here Local 2850.
Por el contrato de nuestra unión, hemos tenido seguro médico para nuestras familias.
And through our union contract, we've been able to have health insurance for our families.
Desafortunadamente, se venció hace dos años y medio.
But unfortunately, our union contract expired two and a half years ago.
Y la gerencia de los, no nos ha dado, no nos ha ofrecido un contrato justo.
And the management from the Oaks refuses to negotiate with us a fair contract.
En estos dos años o tres años, el costo de la seguridad se ha incrementado hasta 500 dólares al mes.
And in these two years, the cost of our medical insurance has increased to more than $500 a month.
Y no hemos recibido ningún aumento de salario por aproximadas cinco, aproximadamente cinco o seis años.
And we haven't gotten a raise in our wages for at least six years.
Yo necesito un seguro médico económico para mi familia.
I needed an affordable healthcare plan for my family.
Y como no ganamos mucho, es importante tener un seguro de bajo costo.
And as we don't make a lot of money at the Oaks Corner, it's very important to us to have an affordable health insurance plan.
Estamos dedicados a luchar hasta que ganemos lo que nuestras familias necesitan.
And we're committed to fight until we win what our families deserve.
Si ustedes suben el salario mínimo, pueden ayudarnos a dar un paso hacia adelante.
And if you, the city of Emeryville, raise the minimum wage, you can help us take one step forward.
Y como comentó mi compañera, vamos a tener una acción el día de mañana, los invitamos.
And as my coworker Juana mentioned, we're going to have an action tomorrow at 5:00 PM, and we want to invite you all.
Gracias por su apoyo.
And thank you for your support.
Is Jorge Hernandez here?